Doug Reinstein, and welcome to our August 13th Board of Ed meeting. Could I have a motion to return to the public session?
The move.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Let me just talk a little bit about the outline for our meeting tonight. As we get started, we have a couple of items to discuss. The first one on these agenda will be the open campus at Governor Livingston High School, which is a tradition we do at our meeting in August each year. A large part of our meeting will cover our reopening plan, similar to the way we did it last week. And then we'll have the rest of the board's business. There will be a public, open citizens' hearing for anybody who wishes to address the board on either the reopening plan or anything else before the board. That will be a one-time thing. I will announce that. We'll explain to you how you can raise your hand and be identified, and then we'll go forward. With that, let me share my initial thoughts. It's an exciting yet challenging time as we get ready to welcome students back for the start of the 2021 academic year. The beginning of September always revitalizes our community with energy. Of course, this year will be like none before as we face the changes brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic. None of us anticipated or would have chosen our current circumstances, but we have adapted so students can continue their education. While the decision to pursue both the in-person and the remote modes of instruction has brought mixed emotions, we believe it is the best way to improve educational outcomes while at the same time protecting the health and safety of our students and staff. John Donahoe, the president and CEO of Nike, summed up the challenge facing every leader these days. As one might expect from a company whose longtime slogan has been "Just Do It", John's advice during a crisis was equally compelling: Just showing up, be authentic, and be transparent. Our goal during this pandemic that started back in March is exactly that: to be as authentic as we can while sharing as much relevant information in as timely a manner as possible. During that same leadership session, there were other key principles that leaders must embrace: anticipate what lies ahead, navigate course-correct in real time, communicate continuously, because that's where leadership lives and breathes, listen to what others have to say, potentially ones that you don't want to hear, learn, fail fast, learn faster, and never stop learning. We as a district have done all of these during the pandemic, but we are committed to continuous improvement, as we know we can always do better. That said, we sit here three weeks before the start of the 2021 school year with levels of complexity, uncertainty, and anxiety like we have never seen before in a school setting. As many of you are likely aware, the governor's guidance regarding students returning to an in-person school experience was updated yet again yesterday. The superintendent will be sharing her recommendation of Plan B this evening. Some in our community believe that Plan B is the most appropriate return-to-school plan for a community like ours. Others don't agree, that they either believe Plan A is the best solution, or that Plan C is the direction that we should pursue. I have talked to countless parents, educators, as well as medical professionals over the past several weeks, and there's one thing I can say with absolute certainty: is that not everybody agrees on what's the best way to educate our students for the upcoming year. But what's critically important and something we can't lose sight of is that it's not about being fully right or fully wrong. Of course, there are no hard and fast rights or wrongs in this situation. It's about optimizing our students' educational outcomes and doing so within an acceptable level of risk in this current environment. That's the absolute best we can collectively do for our students. Again, I know we can get through this if we hold ourselves accountable and are respectful of each other. These are extraordinary but temporary times. Let us work collectively so we can look back on these days as a time when our community came together as one for the benefit of all of our students and staff. Thank you. With that, I will... With that correspondence, Donna. Oh, let me hold on. Let me back up. Sorry. Can I get a motion for the approval of minutes for our June 30th and July 30th meetings?
The move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are now part of the record. I'm sorry, now, Donna, correspondence.
Okay, we have a thank you note from Mr. Frank Mirabella. We have an email from Black Lives Matter regarding incident of racism. We have five emails regarding return-to-school comments. We have a letter from the PTO president at Mary Kay McMillan regarding the PTO donations. And we had an email from Ms. Victoria Van Riel regarding the value of coaches.
Great. Thank you, Donna. With that, I will turn it over to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Varley, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much, Doug. Good evening, everyone. As all of you know, the governor's announcement Wednesday afternoon on the reopening of school has left the school systems of New Jersey in a state of upheaval. The governor, who has access to significantly more information on health and safety from both the state and the federal government, has decided that individual superintendents and boards of education should decide whether or not the schools in their town are safe to open. As I've said repeatedly in my communication to all of you individually and through my public statements, I believe that it is vital that all of our students return to in-person school. This is my opinion, both as an educational professional and as a parent. I am not, nor is anyone on the Board of Education, a medical professional with an expertise in the fields of infectious diseases or epidemiology. The governor's announcement yesterday stated that individual school districts can opt for a mode if they can provide, prove they are not safe. While stating this, the governor did not supply school districts with updated specific metrics as to what is or is not safe, so that we can make an informed decision. All of the plans that the district has developed have sought to balance student and staff safety with appropriate academic rigor and the necessary structure that our students and families require. My initial recommendation of Plan A reflected these priorities. Upon reading a survey with our teaching staff that stated that 90% of our teachers do not feel safe with Plan A and with the governor's pronouncement of last week that halted New Jersey's reopening plan, I have decided to recommend Plan B. Plan B has 50% of the students in school on any given day. This plan is safer because it decreases student density in the building. However, in doing so, it also removes half of our students from the structure of the building, increases the childcare burden on our families, and is inherently less academically rigorous. To be perfectly clear, I believe that none of these options are good. I, like all of you, want nothing more than a return to normalcy with all of our students and staff in school every day, all day, happy, safe, and healthy. But Governor Murphy's announcement yesterday has placed all districts in New Jersey in a position where they have to make decisions on student and staff safety without any direct guidance from the state on what is, in reality, the very eve of reopening. The district has been proactively working for months to address the already issued, voluminous state regulations regarding staff and student safety. PPE, air handlers, Plexiglas, disinfectants, disinfectants, and a myriad of other avenues have been pursued. Some successfully, many derailed by order backlogs and market forces driven by thousands of school districts across the country trying to purchase the same items. We have been promised by the DOE that updated specific guidelines on what constitutes minimum safety standards for reopening are forthcoming. Because this Board of Education meeting was scheduled well in advance of the governor's announcement yesterday and for the reasons stated above, my recommendation to the Board of Education, based on what is actually known at this time, is Plan B. I understand that you are all frustrated, exasperated, and exhausted. We all are. Administration, teachers, parents, students, we all want everything to return to some semblance of normalcy. That is beyond anyone's control. So short of normal, everyone wants it to be safe and as good as we can possibly make it. I can assure you that in the face of a very volatile situation, we are working towards the best plan we can possibly have. And so now, we have a student that's out there, Mr. Reinstein, Desmond Lamb, who is going to come talk about open campus at G O. If someone wants to let him in.
I just did. Desmond, you should be coming up right now, and there you are. Desmond, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Desmond Lamb, the class president of the senior class. I'm reaching out to the Board of Education to request the approval of open campus privileges for the Governor Livingston class of 2021 for the 2020-2021 school year. I ask that you guys grant our proposal for the good-standing members of the class of 2021. Our classmates have worked tirelessly throughout the school year, excelling both academics and extracurriculars, following the rules in the Governor Livingston student handbook, demonstrating their school spirit and academic integrity, building relationships with their teachers, and ultimately fostering an amazing community at Governor Livingston. Even during the COVID-19 pandemic, they've continued their excellent work and have refused to let adverse events stop their success. Because of their dedication, these wonderful students should be granted open campus privileges for the 2020-2021 school year. Due to the unique circumstances this year, open campus privileges have changed to work with the proposed schedule so students remain safe. For students who have study hall in the first period, the proposed changes will allow them to come to school late. And for students who have study hall last period, they will be allowed to leave school early. Since we don't want students leaving school for one period and then returning the next period, students will not be able to leave during the second or third period. Because of the way that the drop schedule works, most students with a study hall will have study hall first or last period at least once during the week. Meaning that open campus privileges will apply to all seniors enrolled in the study hall, regardless of what block they have it. Additionally, to reduce contact, the open campus pass process has been updated to a contactless pass via Google Form. I'm incredibly grateful for your time to consider the proposal for open campus. And I would like to thank the entire Board of Education on behalf of the class of 2021 for their outstanding work in navigating the coronavirus pandemic and finding solutions for the Governor Livingston community. Thank you.
All right, Desmond, thank you very much. Dr. Varley, do you want to add anything about that? I know typically, Mr. Nixon is usually here to provide a brief overview of that. Do you want to add anything?
I think I'm good. I think we know what... I think Desmond did a great job of explaining exactly how it will work during our four-hour day, so I think I'm set.
Okay, the only other thing that I remember Rob Nixon saying every year is a reminder, Desmond, that he is the keeper of the keys. On snow days or rain days or inclement weather days or anything else, his decision is final. I don't believe he's used it often over the years, but I do recall him saying that over the years. So I will ask the board, and I'll take a head nod for that. Do I have agreement from the board to grant the senior class of 2021 open campus privileges as is done in previous years? Okay, I see thumbs up and head nods. So Desmond, you have the board's approval. And if I recall, there's usually a form that has to be filled out over the next couple of days, has to be approved by a parent, and then you get put into that for open campus. So Desmond, thank you. Share with your senior friends that open campus is approved. I suspect that Google Form will get a lot of activity over the next 24 hours, and we look forward to all the great things that your senior class will do. Thanks, Desmond.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, Dr. Varley, back to your rest of your superintendent's report.
So next, we have the revised reopening plan, and I do believe you have to give Mr. McKinney access so that he can share his screen. It will be presented by Mr. McKinney, myself, and Mary Beth Kopas, who is probably out there in the audience somewhere.
All right, I see Mary Beth is on.
She's promoted.
Got it. Thank you, Mike. And I see Scott's screen is coming up.
And just while we're waiting for a second, I do want to introduce Mary Beth. She is our new Director of Elementary and Intervention. So give her a big welcome to her first board presentation a month into the job.
Welcome, Mary Beth.
Welcome.
So this is our revised plan from when we met on July 30th. So Scott, if you can move us along. And our mission is still the same. We want to care for our students while providing a rigorous education. The process still is the same, but we left the slides up there so everyone could see what all we've been doing during the summer. As well as our guiding principles, they have also stayed the same: communication, health, and safety, instruction, and access to learning. So Plan B is having approximately 50% of our students in attendance on a given day. While we know we want all of our students in school, we wanted to come up with a plan that made everyone feel comfortable. And at the last meeting, at that time, the BHA felt more comfortable with Plan B. We will alternate weeks with half the student population present at a time. One week, your child will be in school for five days for a four-hour schedule, and then the next week, they would be home, remote learning. The student body, at this time, will be split in half according to the first letter of their last name. And we're not going to do that with Mary Kay McMillan and some of our special ed students because it's a different situation, but more information's going to be coming soon. Using this plan, students will be socially distanced, and students who are on the remote weeks will be learning virtual live streaming and small group live interaction. So students will be... We have worked out a plan, and it's a part of the governor's guidelines where students will be given a chance to go outside in staggered recess and not sharing different materials. All students will be required to wear, and staff, face coverings, masks, unless they have a documented respiratory issue or other condition. In that case, they will be required to wear a face shield. The teacher will also be socially distanced from the student, and in elementary grades, we will have our teachers move and not the students. And in grades six through 12, the schedule will entail a four-period day to reduce the frequency and amount of transition times in the hallway. So for our Early Childhood Center, we've moved some things around. And from our Plan A, our pre-K program will stay the same, four days a week for 3.5 hours. It's going to be two days for the AM and two days for the PM. And then our half-day kindergarten, two consecutive four-hour days, AM on Monday, Tuesday, PM on Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday remote for groups, for both groups to allow fewer transitions. And then our full-day kindergarten and first grade will rotate. One group will be in school one week, and the other will attend the following week. When not in school, they will be remote, and we will refund a portion of the FDK tuition. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. McKinney to discuss the school schedules, which have stayed the same from Plan A.
Good evening. As Dr. Varley has already shared, through a rapidly evolving landscape, we continue to work together to develop the best plan for the students of Berkeley Heights Public Schools within the constraints created by the guidelines provided to us by the Department of Education and numerous health agencies. As more detailed information continues to be provided by the state, it remains our goal to have our students return to our classrooms in some capacity while implementing as many of the risk mitigation strategies as possible. As you can see, our school day schedule remains the same as our previous plan. These similarities are intentional, as our plans were developed with the understanding that we may have to transition between Plans A, B, and C on short notice based upon changing public health data and direction by the state. We have proposed a four-hour in-person schedule to allow for direct contact with classroom instructors, time for student travel and lunch, and then afternoon sessions with direct teacher contact according to the established schedules contained on the slide. Apologize. And I will turn it over to Ms. Kopas, who will walk you through what the day will look like in the K5 setting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you this evening. As you can see on the screen in front of you, this is our schedule for pre-K through 5. You can see that pre-K starts at 8:45 and will go through until dismissal time at 12:15. And then you're building in your student travel time to home, where then from 2:00 to 3:00, 3:10, they will be working either remotely or in small group instruction, or they may have some kind of independent work, depending on what's sent home with them. For grades K, they're starting at 8:45, ending at 12:45, and again, building in travel time. And then the afternoon is small differentiated instruction and remote learning. And then for grades 2 through 5, again, it starts at 8:10. The day will end at 12:25, built-in travel time so that students can get home and teachers can get their prep, and then the afternoon is from 1:45 to 2:50. Again, it's important to note that in 5th grade, where it says, for example, "Switch math" or "Switch social studies and science", that means the teachers are switching, not the students. And so again, the teachers will rotate if they are being departmentalized in a departmentalized fashion. It's important to note that we've built in social and emotional learning. We want to make sure that we are taking care, first and foremost, of students' social and emotional needs, in addition, obviously, to focusing on foundational skills. Also, as you can see by the schedule, we're focusing on core content areas, including reading, mathematics, writing, science, and social studies. Thank you.
At the 612 level, it will be similar to what we described two weeks ago. As we walk through the school day with students attending Columbia or Governor Livingston, they will report to their classrooms using arrival protocols that will include a verification that a COVID health screening questionnaire has been submitted to the school. Approximately 50% of the students will attend their four morning or afternoon classes. Each class will be approximately 56 minutes in length, with time set aside for the transition between periods. The district opted for a four-period day to allow more in-depth and rigorous instruction while at the same time reducing the number of transitions between periods to three, as opposed to five in a six-period day. During the period, the lesson will also be streamed to those students in the other group as well as to those students who have elected the full remote option. These students will be able to ask questions and collaborate with their peers using available district technologies. Following the morning session, and once the students have returned home and had a short lunch break, afternoon sessions will be offered so that every student has access to every one of their teachers on every school day. While the A-group, B-group weekly schedule will be created and fixed for the year to allow for families to plan accordingly, the AM/PM days may need to be adjusted at times to maintain a balanced schedule for all classes. So to address one of the questions, and as we continue to plan, we needed to establish the expectations for what remote learning will look like for students who are learning from home. During the morning session, students will log... From home, will log into the classroom lessons that will be livestreamed using district conferencing tools such as Zoom or Google Meet. Lessons will be designed to include live interactions that include a check-in or anticipatory set to kick off the learning process. All students will then be engaged in classwork activities that will be facilitated by the classroom teacher. The conclusion of a lesson will include a closure activity and/or a check for student understanding as well as final reminders about upcoming assignments. Activities and expectations will be adjusted according to student grade level and individual needs. The overall goal is to engage all of our students as active participants in our learning, regardless of where it is taking place, and on a consistent and daily basis. This expectation, however, does not mean the teachers will be expected to provide full-period Zoom lessons. As we discussed at our last meeting, this is not considered to be an effective instructional practice.
And if I can mirror what Scott said earlier, I'm going to address remote learning and what it might look like in the elementary grades. Again, when students are in class, there also will be students at home who are learning through either Zoom or Google Meet. So again, we want teachers to facilitate remote learning in a developmentally appropriate manner, which doesn't always mean sitting... Having students sit in front of a screen all day long. So essentially, what we want to do is foster what I like to call gradual release of responsibility, where teachers first will model a lesson, will model what they're doing, then with students, both whether they're face-to-face or whether they're remote, do some kind of learning together in a together-an-environment, and again, much more scaffolded environment. And then the teacher then releases the students to go off and try it on their own. And that's the independent portion of the lesson, where actually the screen may be turned off. Then students have an opportunity to learn independently, to work independently. So for example, if it's a reading lesson, students may then go and try the reading strategy on their own with their own books. Then at the end of the lesson, come back together and have a closure so that teachers can determine whether students have a level of understanding or whether they have to reteach or enrich students. Livestreaming for the teachers will take place, and the district will make every effort to avoid capturing images of students. So the camera should be solely on the teacher, and the teacher should, for the most part, be stationary when he or she is teaching a lesson. At times during the lesson, as I said, the camera may be turned off. Again, we want to be cognizant of what's developmentally appropriate. It also looks different in different grade levels. So for example, with the younger grades, there may not be quite as much independent work, but when you're starting to get in grades four or five, certainly they're capable of doing more independent work. Students will use conferencing features, such as how to raise their hand to participate in discussions and to ask questions if they're at home. And each building will establish guidelines and expectations for student success in a remote environment. Not only will these expectations be shared with teachers and students, but certainly with families. The strategies and expectations should be age-appropriate. And again, you will be receiving many of these guidelines. If you haven't already received them, they will be coming very shortly. If I can continue, teachers will be assigned to specific roles in the afternoon. Again, we are going to avoid professional responsibilities so that they have time to work solely with students, whether it's individually, small group instruction, or even having some, what we call loosely, office hours so that students can check in or parents can even ask questions if they need to. The afternoon, as I said, might include student conferencing, small group instruction, remediation, or enrichment, or some type of related service that would be provided. This time can be scheduled by students, so if a student needs to reach out to a teacher, they know how to do that. Or it might be directed by a teacher. So a teacher may say, "Well, I'm going to meet with this group on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday", and they will let the families and the students know what days they'll be meeting in the afternoon. Communication procedures to schedule this time will be established by teachers and shared with students and families.
And just to echo, at the 612 level, it will be mostly the same. Again, the schedule was specifically coordinated to allow all students to have access to all of their teachers on every day. to have access to all of their teachers on every day. And although this is certainly not the schedule that we would design in a perfect world or in our normal setting, we are providing the same amount of contact time with our students that we would have in a normal setting. It is really, the major change is the format. The afternoon is provided so that teachers and students can get the individual services that they require and can have contact on the in-between days, between the AM and the PM learning sessions. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Varley.
So in Plan C, we know, we pretty much know what Plan C is. And that, that is, parents who choose to have their children not come into in-person instruction. Students will receive virtual instruction. Each school will have a set schedule, and teachers and students will follow that schedule with live interaction taking place each day. The education, the experience will be different as far as the student will be at home, but they will be learning the exact same thing that the students are in the classroom. There may be individual or special circumstances in which some students may report to school, depending on the nature of the executive order or district situation. So I sent out a form earlier this week that a parent may choose to send their child remotely, but they must notify the district by August 20. And remote students, since we do have to plan and space, remote students will not be allowed to return to in-person instruction until the end of a marking period, or for elementary students, November 1st, February 1st, or April 1st. We are awaiting guidance, still waiting guidance from the Department of Education as to whether remote students may participate in in-person extracurricular activities. And then special education and related services, none of this has changed for Plan B. It's still the same as it was for Plan A, as well as this one, we are definitely ordering sneeze guards and disposable gowns, et cetera.
The next two slides are a brief summary of the questions we committed to answer from our previous meeting. We just briefly discussed what our afternoon sessions would look like. The key takeaway is that all of our students will have direct access to their teachers in the afternoon sessions for help, guidance, and support. We encourage students and their families to make use of the electronic platforms to find plans for learning, as well as calendars for assignments and assessments. This will look different with each age group, and students and parents should keep the lines of communication open to address any individual needs or concerns. In the area of student health screening, the district has explored a number of options to facilitate this process and has decided to utilize a portal tied to our Power School platform. This will facilitate the daily screening process using a tool that is integrated with our student management system, and our families are already familiar with. As the school year approaches, further details will be shared with our families for implementing this process. And finally, building principles will be communicating our process for the distribution of school materials by August 25th, so that families can plan and make arrangements to collect what they need to start the school year.
And we have a few more questions to answer. One of the questions will, how, how, one of the questions was, how will backpacks and lockers be handled? We will not be using lockers in any of the grades or any of the schools. It does not allow for social distancing. In the elementary schools, we're preferring that students keep their belongings in a large labeled plastic bag, or possibly sometime, type of string or cinch bag, something that's smaller, again, that we can keep separated so that we have room in the classrooms or room in the hallways, and also, so something that's easily washable or disposable. Again, at the middle school and high school, since we're not using lockers, students are encouraged to plan for the school day, carry only their necessary books or materials that they need for the four-day period. And again, it's encouraged to have some kind of small tote or string cinch, cinch bag. Again, not only for, to keep, to keep social distancing and to keep room in classrooms, but also so that they're easily washable. And then how will movement in schools be organized? This is just a small list of the protocols and practices that we're putting in place. And they are not, they are including, but not, not limited to different entrances by grade level to enter, enter next at the building, hallways and stairway, stairwells will be one-way, staggered, staggered transitions, lined areas for arriving and dismissal and waiting for buses. Again, we're trying to minimize large area gatherings. And if they do need to go in large areas, they are marked for social distancing. And then in the elementary seating, setting, we have teachers moving, and we're limiting student interactions. And in grades 6 through 12, as you know, the schedules are adjusted to limit transitions and times in the hallways.
So my recommendation to the Board of Education is Plan B. A survey of our teaching staff was recently completed, and when asked which physical return to school plan was preferred, 90% of our teaching staff preferred Plan B, with the remaining 10% preferring Plan A. In partnership with our teaching staff and what we believe is an abundance of caution, I am recommending that we move to our Plan B reopening model. Plan B will offer in-person instruction and a level of educational rigor while providing for the safety for our staff and students. So our next steps are the same next steps. I have sent our plan to the Department of Education, as well as the Department of Health, and we are just waiting for their approval. And then to continue regular community updates. And then our frequently asked questions are there. And I think that's the end of it. We're ready for questions now.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Varley. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mary Beth. We will now proceed to the citizens' hearing portion of our meeting. If you would like to be recognized, use the raise your hand functionality. I will promote you. You can come off video, come off video and audio if you'd like. You can ask your question or make your comment. The first person is Michelle Eddington. I'm sorry, Leddington. The one thing I learned from the last meeting is, I realized that the person whose name that shows up in the panel is not always the person who's speaking. So Michelle could be Michelle's spouse or somebody else. So I apologize. I am calling out the name that I see in the panel. Michelle, can you hear me? You can come off mute?
Hold on. Okay, I'm not on mute. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening, Michelle. Welcome.
Good evening. First, Michelle Leddington, 239 Park Avenue. First, I just want to thank you all. I think this plan is, you've done a lot of work in doing this plan and, and trying to make this the best for our students and for our kids, and I really do appreciate that and how detailed the plan is. I do have a couple of, two questions of clarification for you. The first is, as I see it in the plan, all the specials teachers, at least in the elementary schools, are going to be traveling between all three schools and offering in-class instruction to all of the regular classrooms. If that is correct, won't these teachers then be exposed to all of the students in all of the schools? And won't they then carry that exposure into the classrooms when they go in for instruction? For example, the music teachers will be actually going to all three or four elementary schools and teaching all levels of students, thus exposing them to each, them to each other, as well as to the teachers and the staff. Perhaps, maybe they could Zoom on the specials into the classroom on the screen, and it might be a better and safer way, as opposed to increasing that risk of exposure. My second question is, since this, there are going to be students at home learning remotely and students who are physically in the classroom. I loved what you guys said in terms of how you're going to connect them. My question is, do we have the bandwidth for the students at school to all be on their devices at the same time? And all of the teachers on Google Meet or Zoom at the same time? I asked this because I know that I teach in a nearby district, and I know that we do not have that bandwidth. And it's a wealthy district as well. I asked this also because when we tried in our district, I'm teaching to see if the students at home would be able to hear the kids who are physically in the classroom, and they're not going to be able to hear them. In addition, the teacher will have difficulty hearing the students. Sorry, my dog. The teacher, in addition, the teacher will have difficulty hearing the students, and the students will have difficulty hearing the teacher because of the face mask and the face shield, as well as because of technology. There is technology, like you guys mentioned, which I thought was great, that can be utilized to connect the two groups of students and foster rich academic discussions. However, it would mean that all students would need to be logged on at the same time. Without this ability, the in-person teaching would not be of very high quality because class discussions will be difficult, students will strain to hear the teacher for instruction. Any hands-on help will not be permitted. No materials can be handed out. So any readings or images that the teachers want to share with students will have to be through the computer, and only the kids at home will have access to that. If we don't have the bandwidth to make this work, would it be possible, especially in the upper grades, 6 to 12, to start the year remotely until the district can acquire the necessary bandwidth? Thank you. That's all. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Varley.
So that was a lot. So I, as far as starting the school year remotely, that is not completely off the table at this moment. We are, you know, we, we really, I really want children to be in-person. As far as the bandwidth is considered, we did upgrade our bandwidth. We have tested it. Of course, we haven't tested it with 500 kids in a building, as well as the teachers in the building too. And I do agree with you, listening to people talk with a mask on is difficult. It is something we're going to have to figure out. I, I don't know if we have every single answer to every single question, but we will figure it out. We have a lot of smart teachers and smart students, and it's, you know, it's, it's a difficult time.
Dr. Varley, she asked about, about the specialist teachers and the, and, and whether they were going to be visiting every, every, every school.
At this time, we do, I think we, unless we've changed, Scott, have we, were they still visiting every school?
No, most of our special area teachers are split between two schools. We did explore a number of different scheduling options. However, having them push in rather than have the students move made more sense. We will have to take some extra precautions because they will be with more students than the classroom teachers. However, we don't have the ability to have them Zoom without the students receiving the supervision they need in the classroom. So there's some logistical challenges with that as an option, but we continue to explore all of those possibilities.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Melissa. Michelle, thank you for the question. Next person is Emily Ramos. Emily?
Hi, thanks. My name is Emily Ramos. I'm a part of a coalition of concerned Berkeley Heights parents and alumni called Allies for Racial Equity in Schools. Our members are focused on creating a racially just school system in our town. We're excited to begin working with our school leadership on the diversity committees that Dr. Varley has created. We welcome the opportunity to help our schools achieve their goals of including, inspiring, and empowering every student by ensuring our curriculum policies, procedures, and teachers are steeped in anti-racist values. In light of the large number of teacher vacancies going into this school year, members of our group were wondering about the district's plans to attract new crop of highly qualified teachers. We're obviously saddened by the loss of so many experienced teachers. We look at this as a way to diversify our teaching staff with educators that are creative, digitally savvy, and racially diverse. Of course, we understand the district's priority is to fill vacancies with the best of the best, and that includes teachers from all backgrounds. We imagine that competition for such teachers this year is stiff. So we were wondering if you could give a bit more insight into your recruitment plans for attracting a talented pool of diverse candidates. Thank you.
So I know, I think I've spoken about this. Right now, I will say that we are having, every, every district in New Jersey is scrambling to find teachers at this moment. So I will say, we're, we're in the same boat. For this situation, we, we rarely apply and advertise at Star Ledger, but we are advertising in the Star Ledger to try to get a wider range of individuals. And we have partnered with Teachers College of Columbia so that they have quite the diverse network, so that we can get some of, get access to who they, they have access to. And they network and use several project schools, many thousands of project schools throughout New York and New Jersey. So that is our big area of focus right now. I will say that so is everyone else. So we are having, we're right now, we're having a difficult time replacing some of our staff.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Next up is Liz Kane. Liz, good evening.
Hi, how are you? I have a couple of questions just to clarify as well. I can start my video too. First of all, I understand that there are some issues with the, with everyone trying to buy PPE at once. Dr. Varley, were you saying that there, there's an issue getting PPE, sufficient PPE for educators and staff as school begins, or no?
Just trying to.
Well, as of right now, and I can, I can toss this one to Donna. I do know that we have had a lot of stuff come in in the past few days. So Donna, are we waiting on anything else, or do we have a, are we preset?
We have a good supply of equipment. We did get a lot of equipment within the past few days, and we're storing it all in one location. We haven't distributed to the schools yet. We have gotten most of what we ordered. The one thing that we're low on is sanitizing wipes, and I think that that is felt again by a lot of people in the community and at other schools. We have a supply to start the school year that we have, what we ordered in the spring. So we have enough to start the school year. We have it ordered, and it's on backwater.
And is there also then, like, plexiglass shields and things like that for the teachers in the classrooms, or like, everyone who's, who needs that, or?
Yes, we have all of that ordered. Again, now that's in our, that's in our school at Columbia. We have all of that delivered there, and we will distribute that as needed before school begins.
Okay, thanks. All right. So I have actually three more clarifying questions. I'll just, I'll give you one at a time, so you don't have to remember them all. So that was my first. So then the next is, in regards to live streaming, I saw in the slides that it said to use a combination or whatever works, Zoom or Google Meet. And I thought I heard there were some privacy issues with Zoom. Is that the case? Has that been addressed? Do we know if that's still an open issue?
So back when Zoom first came out, when we, well, when everyone started using Zoom in March and April, they did have some privacy issues. But as of now, they have fixed it where you have to either have a password or a direct link, and then someone has to let you into the Zoom. And so it eliminates, we would have, we would have some, I guess, Zoom bombers. I guess that's a good, good way to call it in the beginning. And that has pretty much been eliminated, as far as I know. I don't know if Mr. Scara is listening in on this, but he would have more information on this.
Yes, I am, Dr. Varley, and you are 100% correct, exactly as you said.
Thank you.
Liz, next question.
Okay, I was curious in regards to that flipping schedule with the students coming in, in the morning, having your first four periods, and then it's in the, on the slides. In the afternoon, the schedules are more for assessment and office hours. Does that mean that it's not new content in regards to that? Or assessment, does that mean that, like, they would never have a test during the school day? It would all be remote?
No, the afternoon hours are set, and the primary goal would be to have no new content at that point. It would be time to work with small groups of students to reteach if necessary to. Now, there might be an opportunity for a student who needed extra time on an assessment, so you might use it that way for an individual, to meet individual needs. Really, the only thing that we want to have off-line want to have off limits is we don't want it to be new content that is being taught at that time. Everything else is fair game and we want every student to be able to have direct access face to face in that, in that afternoon window. And again, it's a two-way street. You know, it could be directed by the teacher. It also could be requested by the, the student or the parent could get involved in that if, as necessary.
Great. And then last quick question. Now that we've changed the schedules in regards to the, everything, I'm curious why GL still has to meet kind of first, like those students seem to be the ones who have the hardest time starting their day before eight o'clock. Is there?
I don't think that the answer to that has changed. I, as I, we talked about last time. I still think a lot of parents use their high school students to watch the siblings. When they get home. So we wanted, we tried to make, make that work out so that we didn't create another childcare issue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean having the students meet in the afternoon as much as having maybe Mary Kay start first at 7:50. And then GL, instead of GL starting at 7:50, they would be the ones who start at like 8:30. I already forgot what the other times are as they stagger back. Like it would just give those students an extra hour.
Yeah, it would still mean that the GL students would be in school and the younger students would be at home.
Getting home after. I understand you. Okay, thank you. Those were all my questions here.
All right, Liz, Liz, thank. Liz, thank you very much. The next person I see on is Yelena. Yelena, welcome. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I have a fourth, a daughter going into the fourth grade. And this is the first time that I've actually been able to sit down to hear the actual plan. And I'm a little disheartened to hear about the remote option that's being offered. I just was curious. You're saying that the students who'll be fifth and fourth graders will be responsible for self-monitoring and self-guidance intermittently without any type of oversight or supervision. I, I'm just curious how you're ensuring that the education is sufficient or rigorous enough and equal for students who are remote.
If I can just clarify a bit. I didn't want to give the perception that fourth and fifth grade students would be working completely independently. I wanted to give the impression that they, they are more independent than let's say a first grader would be. So there's explicit instruction taking place. But there is an opportunity for fourth and fifth graders to do a little more independent work. So for example, they may do an inquiry project where they're going and doing some research and exploring and then maybe writing an expository piece. But, but this wouldn't be without teacher guidance. I mean, clearly it would need to be with teacher guidance.
So for example, if my daughter is being told, okay, turn on your monitor, go write this essay, and she has a question, what does she do?
The same thing she would do if, if she were face to face. She would be able to raise her hand in a remote setting and get support from a teacher.
Okay. So the reason I ask that is because the guidance came out today from the governor about what happens. I don't, and I'm kind of shocked that it wasn't mentioned here about what happens if two students in a school come back as COVID-19 positive. And from what I read from today's guidance is that the entire school will be shut down for 14 days. So during those 14 days, and I'm sure everybody will be remote. But do you guys have a plan for that or how is that going to be addressed? In general, are students going to be asked to test before they come back? Are staff going to be asked to test before they come back? I, I was maybe in the next communication that can be addressed, the new guidance coming from the governor. I think that's it for me.
Great, Elena, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm, Dr. Varley, you already just addressed the question about whether we're having students or staff tested prior to starting school.
Absolutely. As of right now, we are not able to test people. We can, we can strongly suggest people get tested. But I know Newark is asking their teaching staff to be tested, but our guidance from our attorney is that we do not ask our staff or our students to be tested for COVID.
Great, Elena, thank you very much. The next up is Dana Rosenbloom, although your picture does not look like a Dana.
Hi, it's actually Scott Rosenbloom. That happens to be my sister, but I'm on, just using her account.
That's okay, Scott. Good evening. Welcome.
So I have two sons who are about to continue in Mountain Park. And my question, you mentioned earlier about that the teachers are going to be receiving additional professional education and I'm wondering if, if you can elaborate on that. And it mainly because, you know, certainly give all the credit in the world to the teachers at the end of last year, suddenly having to use all this technology. I'm wondering though, you know, if over the summer already or in what you talked about, that will include technology training and along with that, whether or not there's a, a standard procedure, standard set of procedures kind of being given across the board. As an example. At the end of last year, some teachers, using Google Classroom, some teachers wanted work submitted, some didn't want it submitted, some assignments had a done, Marcus done button. But basically from teacher to teacher and subject to subject, there were just a lot of differences in how, how the technology would be used. Yeah, I give all the credit to them to just sort of make it work. But I'm wondering if during the time between then and three weeks from now, some kind of standard has been worked on so it's consistent throughout each teacher and class.
I can, you know, I can address some of that. First, we have done a significant amount of internal professional development and, and discussions on what we learned from last, the, the last third of the, of the school year and developed at each of those levels. We have standing groups called Council on Instruction, some of the best practices. And how we can share among grade level teachers and, and that type of thing. We are in the process of formalizing that and providing additional opportunities for our teaching staff members through the month of August. So that they may have an opportunity to look at some more of the advanced features that are offered by Zoom conferencing and Google Meet. As far as standardization, we are going to standardize our expectations for the face-to-face contact and the implementation of what we believe to be good teaching in a virtual environment. But the, the art of teaching still exists and there will be differences from classroom to classroom. With regards to, you know, how it's completely implemented. And some of that is to meet the individual needs and styles of the students in the classroom. With regards to the, the assessment and the grading piece, that is the ongoing discussion that we will have. And, you know, as you said, we will be much better at it this time as we move forward with all the lessons we've learned and discussions we've had. So I would anticipate a, a better experience across the, and a more, to your point, a more consistent experience across the board as we've had time to prepare. So I think we're.
Thanks very much. Great, Scott, thank you very much. The next person, I was, their initials were KB. So KB, you can unmute and then ask a question.
Yes, hi, this is Burgett Burco in Mountainside. I have a sophomore at GL.
Good evening, Burgett. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi there. I have a question about something I thought I heard where you said there is no expectation for an hour or a full class of live streaming. That if you are remote, you're not going to get a, a full hour of live stream for your, your, from your teacher. Did I mishear that or am I interpreting that incorrectly?
The, the students will have full access to their teacher for the entire class depending on what's going on in the lesson. But the, you know, the clarification point that we want to make is that we, we don't believe that direct lecture via Zoom for an hour is good for anybody, not for the student, not for the class. So. Want to make sure that people understand the components of good instruction that we do while we're in person. And that we wouldn't consider that good instruction if we were back full, you know, you know, in our full normal schooling. The, the elements of instruction remain the same, just in a virtual setting. So there may be times where we say, okay, we've introduced this topic. And now for the next 15 minutes, we're going to do some independent practice and then we're going to come back together and look at that. So that, that might be a better explanation of, of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, can, can I just understand a little, a little better if, if. So. If I am either someone who has elected to go all remote or I am somebody in their remote week and my class is meeting in person, you know, I'm in Block A Geometry and my class is meeting in person. I will be streaming into that class. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and, and I will have, I will be streaming into exactly the same class that the children that are there in person. And I will be there for the entire hour. Now, the method of teaching may be that I, you know, that, that the, the topic is introduced. The kids are told to work on a worksheet, maybe work in small groups, come back and discuss what, what was learned. You know, not an hour of, of, of lecture, but, but it is exactly the same class for the same amount of time as if my kid was in the room, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The, the goal would be that the students are, you know, mirroring each other just from different locations. Now, again, not all of that.
So, so every student in the district for the first four hours of the day is going to effectively either be in a seat in the school or on Zoom participating in the same experience that the kids that are in the seats in the school are having.
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
And then just, hold on, just to add to that question, mainly more for Mary Beth and first welcome to the district, first time meeting you. If you can explain more on the first, second, third grade is kind of how that's going to work for those that are remote for that same time period.
It's, it essentially is the same. The, the difference is the amount of independent work that can take place. So again, I go back to with the younger ones, it's, it's definitely going to be a little more direct instruction. And then it may be some small group work. But it's because they can't do as much work independently, it's definitely got to be a little more teacher-directed.
And is consideration taken into the fact that since they really haven't had too much school time, especially first grade going into second grade and had to spend since March remote easing them and how to really, you know, take that into consideration into that planning?
I'm sorry, ask your question again?
Well, being that, think about first grade going into second grade. So their only in-school time was from September till March, then March was all remote. Now they, you know, those are to be remote for the first week, then how is that taken into consideration into that planning?
Oh, excellent question. It's really important for us to get a handle on students when they first enter. Meaning that we really need to do a good deal of assessment to determine, to determine where students are, where their strengths are and where their weaknesses are. And to be honest, that's just good instruction. You really need to start with assessment before you can figure out how you need to instruct students. So it's just, it's, it's as important as it's always been. But if not more so, because we really need to determine where those gaps are so that we can remediate and then move forward with new content.
Great, thanks. Hold on a second.
When you say small groups, Mary Beth, we are still going to be following.
Yeah, Helen, we're having a little trouble hearing this. Helen, Helen, we're having a little trouble hearing you. Some of the, hold, hold your, hold your question. They will, will, I'll come back to you in the board's discussion for that because we can't, we can't hear your audio right now. Okay.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion, Helen? Why don't you type your questions into the chat and we can read them out loud? And, and this way we won't have this, this latency issue.
All right, thanks, Bill. Good suggestion. The next person is, is Jen Ernst. Jen, good evening.
Hi, Doug. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk. We just, before I ask my question, I just need to ask a clarifying question. Did we hear correctly that for Mary Kay, classes are not going to be split in half, A week and B week? It's going to be kindergarten one week and then first grade the next week? Did we hear that correctly?
No, no, it's kindergarten will be split in half and what it, full day kindergarten will be following the same rotation schedule as first grade. So the half of the full day kindergarten will be on one week and half the full day kindergarten will be on the next week. Half the first, first grade will be on one week and the other half will be on the next week.
Okay, then that makes the second part of my question non-existent. And then our, the other question is, we're trying to understand is what flexibility is the board and the district considering in terms of treating the lower grades differently than treating the upper grades in terms of what makes sense in scheduling? Does, the classrooms are bigger in the lower grades than they are in the upper grades. There's less students in the elementary than there is in the middle school and the high school. Is there a reason, I guess the question is, what is the reason that we couldn't try with an average class size that's much smaller to get all of our students from the lower grades into school five days a week for four hours and still socially distanced to, to the most part? And when we consider how many people are probably opting for remote, that makes the classes even smaller. So is there a break even that this will be considered? Is this off the board completely? You know, and what flexibility? It would seem that it wouldn't be just like every district isn't a one-size-fits-all for the whole state. It would seem that the grades wouldn't be a one-size-fits-all.
So as of right now, even with our, the amount of people who in the, one of the surveys that was sent out said that they would send, they would not send their children to school. We can, the guidelines from the governor say that we have to get six feet of distance. And with the amount of students and, and our elementary kids, not at all classrooms can we get six feet of distance. And so that makes us non-compliant.
So is there, if we have a number of students that do pull out and it gets to that point, will you consider changing that along the way? Or are we sort of, you know, what we start with is what we're stuck with?
I don't think in this situation where you're ever in what you start with is what you're stuck with, we have, we seem to be changing on a daily basis. So I mean, I definitely think I, as I've said, I want kids in school. So, but I will, it's something we will consider if we do have the space.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Jen, thanks very much. Next person.
Yeah, but let, let, let's be clear. We're, 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 I think Dr. Varley is recommending Plan B. But, but the goal is to move to Plan A as soon as is, is practical. And, 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 and as soon as we're able to, to move back to a normal schedule, recognizing that's going to be further out than the ability moved to Plan A. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
And, and I think along those lines, I guess our concern is if we are already starting partially remote, it's really going to end. I think we're all realistic that we know that there's going to be somebody that gets COVID and there's going to be a number of students that have to stay home. And that by the time November rolls around, flu season is going to start and everyone's going to have to get tested because we're not going to know if they have a cold or the flu or COVID. And so it would seem that at some point we'll end up remote. And if we don't start the year, at least in person, I feel like at least for the younger kids, and again, we have younger kids. It puts them behind. We, we're lucky to have a good student, but the mental state is really what concerns us, especially if we have to go 100% remote at some point.
And, and we do understand that and I echo Dr. Varley's comments that we have a plan. But if we've learned anything over the last six months is to be nimble, to be flexible, to be adjustable. And as the conditions change one way or another, we will continue to, to adjust. Jen, thank you very much for your question.
Thank you.
The next person is, or it shows up, we have the Rileys.
Hi, thank you. This is Nicole Riley.
Nicole, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time to walk us through Plan B today. So I have a question and I think Liz started to ask this question, but I want to make sure that, that I understand and heard correctly. You mentioned in the presentation that there were order backlogs on some of the safety equipment that clearly a lot of schools are deeming essential. Since there are these backlogs, so many are trying to purchase and are unable to get them. What have we been able to get and what have we not been able to get for our district? And even if it's just the wipes that we haven't been able to get, is there a reason why we wouldn't? And even if it's just the wipes that we haven't been able to get, is there a reason why we wouldn't start virtual until we are able to secure everything that's needed for safe reentry? And then transition to Plan B as soon as those those are available? Because certainly, even if it's just wipes, parents aren't going to be able to provide those. I can't find them anywhere. And I, you know, I'd be surprised if everybody could find them to send them in with their kids.
Donna, you're on mute.
Okay, we have been successful in getting everything we ordered. Again, a lot of things came in this past week. We do have wipes available that we had left over from the spring. We had ordered them at that time, so we were fortunate in that we got in order, so we do have an availability for each school of wipes. We've also, we have thermometers, face shields, disposable masks, gloves, gowns, dust shields, Plexigat, Plexiglas, hand side, hand sanitizers, dispensers, refills. So we have what we need to start school. We probably have what we need to get through several months of school and we are continuing to order these products.
Great, thank you, Donna. Moving on, the next person is Sue Sado.
Hello, this is this is Sue. My questions are specifically for CMS middle schoolers. If Plan B is approved, will we be able to reevaluate the Blue and Go teams? And if so, when will that be finalized?
I think that's a question for Mr. Geiger and I would I would just reach out to him on that. I don't know the answer to that question. Scott, do you know the answer to that question?
Sorry, I don't at this time.
The question, oh, I'm sorry, you heard the question.
Yeah, we heard the question. I think that's that's a direct question to the building principal.
All right, so I'll reach out to Mr. Geiger. The the second question I have is more of a request or a call for help to the teachers. Basically, we're looking to, we're wondering if teachers would be willing to speak to the the parents prior to the start of the school year. Only because we have many questions and we're trying to form pods and and, you know, like-minded students and same level. So and we're looking for for guidance on the curriculum as well as the teaching methods. So it's something that I spoke in and reached out to Mr. Geiger and yet he was helpful, but at the same time, you know, I think, you know, it's more parents seeking help.
So you should be able to find, once you get your child's schedule, you should be able to find the teacher's email addresses on online. And maybe that will help?
Oh, great. So I mean, that's what I'm trying to to understand. Well, are we allowed to like go and 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 reach out to the the teachers?
Reach out to them. They are on summer break, so I don't know if they're actually checking their actively checking their emails. Hopefully, they're relaxing a little bit before the school year starts. But you can definitely email them. It may take them a little bit to get back to you, but you can.
But let's let's be, let's be clear, the teachers are not obligated, correct me if I'm wrong. The teachers are not obligated to reply to their their emails during the summer break. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Right, so you, so you can reach out to them and they and and they may well well reply. But if they don't, they are not violating any policy or breaking any rules.
Right. And from a parent's perspective, I just don't want to be violating anything from outside, you know, so that's why we're asking for their their help. And hopefully they're on this call, so they'll know that many of the parents are reaching out for this type of assistance.
Right, you're perfectly welcome to to reach out and 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 you should and and they and they they may well respond. But if, but if, but I just want to want to forestall the, you know, oh, they were, they were unresponsive. That's not the case if they don't respond.
Sure.
And I would just, I'm sorry, I'd just like to add that with with moving forward with Plan B, there will be some additional schedule changes as we balance the two sides into an A group and a B group. So, you know, we will have that done as quickly as possible to, so that we can communicate schedules. But right now, until we move forward, we need to make sure that we can do that as well. And then obviously then those schedules can be released to students and their families.
Right, okay. And and lastly, based on my understanding, we're condensing a seven hour schedule to a four hour schedule. Would there be guidance as to what what the parents need to do to supplement what they would be missing, if anything? Compared to the the regular school day curriculum?
Based upon the the schedule that we provided with the direct instruction in the morning and the the hours in the afternoon, the students are actually getting the same amount of contact time with their teachers. Now, I'm not saying it's the same as being in school for a six and a half hour day. I wouldn't do, you know, I wouldn't be able to say that with honesty. But they are having the same amount of access to their teachers as they would. Now, we need to have that continued partnership between teachers and parents so that we can support those things. And that's best done directly between the parent and the teacher once the school year begins.
Right, but the the six hours, six and a half hours is based on instructional instructional guidance, right, from the teachers? This, we're saying the last half, last maybe two hours of the day would be more of like parent, student, I mean, sorry, student and teacher conferences. So, you know, I'm asking, because we're condensing it to a four hour instructional guidance with the curriculum be fulfilled, maybe it is. I'm just asking if there would be more guidance to that. And then it may may not be a question that you can answer right now, but it's definitely something I'd be very interested in hearing. And it could be.
And also that is an ongoing, you know, assessment that we have to make to, you know, to start the year, to find out where we're starting with our students based upon how we ended last year and then how far we can get. So, you know, throughout the school year at different grade levels and specifically, you know, we're talking about the middle school and 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 high school. We're going to have to adapt and and adjust what we cover, when we cover and how we cover that to maximize the time we do have together. So that is something that we are looking at and will continue to work through. And something that we will communicate with parents as well.
Great, thank you.
Sue, thank you very much. Next person shows up as Mr. and Mrs. Bryant.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Good evening.
Hi, this is Karima Bryant. My husband and I have three children in Berkeley Heights Public Schools. One question I have regarding the remote learning option, specifically when we talked about students using conference features to raise hands. I'm just thinking back around if how teachers are going to be asking for their, the children to participate and how they'll be graded on that. Because as I reflect on this past session for remote learning, some teachers were not intentional about looking at their full screen of students to understand and see who was raising their hand. So if you have a lot of children who are on remote learning, they might not see who's raising their hand. And so my children were often frustrated that they didn't get called on or they didn't see their hand raised or what have you.
Scott?
That's a, that's one of the topics that we have in in place embedded into the professional development on how to use all of the features, you know, with regards to, you know, Zoom or Google Meet. So the teachers are more aware and more able to use those to do breakout rooms and be aware of how students can raise their hand and do those things. So that's one of our agenda items to make sure that all teachers have the same level of proficiency using the tool.
Great, thank you. And I just want to also echo the comment that was made earlier by Emily. I am also very interested in how the schools are going to look to be creative and open to new ways to bring in diverse teachers and staff. Again, with the black families of Berkeley Heights for Change, it is really important for us that we see diversity in all areas of our school system, including at the teachers and within the education. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next person is Sharon Love. Sharon, good evening.
Hey, thank you. I I have a few questions as well. My my first question is, you know, in the communication that we got last week, it was stated that we were going to do everything that we could to keep students socially distanced when possible with those exact words. And I know the governor's recommendations came out today and it did say that if students couldn't be socially distant in all cases, that we should not be going back live. And at the beginning of the presentation, it was stated that students now will be socially distant. I'm curious what's changed between last week and this week that gives us the confidence that we can keep all students six feet apart at all times and with their masks on.
And the biggest difference is just the population of students that we will have in the buildings and the procedures. The procedures we had in place, you know, for the transitions, you know, are to accommodate that six foot, six foot length within the classrooms. It was a full class, you know, in one of our larger settings, it was difficult to get all those desks there. With the reduction of 50% of those students, we certainly have the ability to space the students out appropriately and make that happen.
Okay. Another another question, maybe a different one this time. Since we've moved to either the hybrid option or the fully remote option as the two options for parents, it's clear that the majority of students are going to be remote throughout the year, either for 50% of the time in the hybrid options or full time in the remote. And so I assume that means that we're really working to optimize that virtual learning environment as much as we can. And I heard a few questions earlier that were related to that and obviously you'll be looking into the bandwidth. One question that I have is for, you know, obviously, live streaming a a live classroom to remote learners is not considered a best practice in online learning. And in any cases, there are obviously a lot of schools that are fully online and higher education, that's not the approach that's ever taken. I understand the circumstances and the challenges that we're facing here. But how are we going to make sure that the students who are remote, who are trying to follow a class where the, there's a camera on the teacher and the teacher is oriented to the students in the classroom and not sitting here as we are right now, right in front of a camera at their desk, looking at all the remote students? How are we going to make sure that the students who are remote, especially if that teacher has a mask on, will they be mic'd? How will we make sure that the students who are remote can hear? How will they have that same level of engagement to keep up what what was stated earlier as this equitable learning experience for all?
So all those are very good questions and we do know that it's going to be, it's going to be interesting at first. I do believe our teachers will be able to rally the, to the, to the, to get to the point. And it's going to take walking around, talking to the students from a safe distance and then walking back behind the desk, checking to see what students at home have raised their hand and then answering those questions. So it's going to take a little bit of coordination and collaboration to make sure that it is effective.
So thank you for that. I mean, respectfully, while I appreciate that and again, you know, I have the greatest respect for everything you're all doing. I've, you know, spoken to others in other parts of the country that I work with and I think the Berkeley Heights School District did a fantastic job under really challenging circumstances in the spring, so I want to thank you all for that. I do know we've had, you know, a lot to deal with and plans have evolved as we've been working towards going back in the fall. And I understand that there's, there's an instinct or an impetus to get every, to get students back in schools. I've heard you say that, Dr. Varley, several times. I am concerned as a parent that in service of trying to get students back in school, we aren't necessarily ensuring that the experience that's going to happen when we get them in school is is going to be the optimal one. And especially for the students who don't go back, that we're going to have an optimal experience. Because again, when the student, when the teacher is walking around, talking to the students in the class, the kids on Zoom are going to be looking at, you know, that. If if this is where the camera is going to be and when the teacher is talking to the kids on the Zoom, then the kids in the class are going to be seeing the side of a teacher's face with a mask on, which is going to make communication very challenging. And I know we've been talking about the importance of connections and what students are missing. I'm just struggling to see how that fractured experience is going to create greater connections for students when they go back versus giving everybody a uniform experience.
I agree. It's going to be, it's it's going to be an interesting situation. I I can't, I can't address every single concern everyone has. We are going to have to figure it out. It is something we haven't done before. We haven't taught live and remote at the same time. So, you know, I I do believe our teachers, just like they rallied in remote learning, they will rally to learn how to manage both environments.
I guess we'll see. I I won't keep pressing on this. My last question then is, I do have another child who was formerly in the Berkeley Heights District. He's now at UC VTS and she has been bussed in to UC VTS. Is, are there still going to be buses running from Berkeley Heights to that district this year if a child, if a parent chooses to send their child in?
Donna, do you have the answer to that question? Donna's not here.
Somehow we lost Donna. Sharon, I will take a note, make sure we get back to you on that. Donna Fozola, who's our business administrator, I'll make sure that she gets back to you with the answer to that question.
I'd appreciate it. And then also what the, what the plan would be for how kids can be distant socially on a bus would be great. Thank you.
Okay, great, Sharon, thank you. The next person is Lee Timmerman. Lee, good evening. I can hear you fine. Good evening.
Absolutely. To space ourselves out, yes, if we can. Absolutely. To space ourselves out, yes, if we can. Yes, and we have, on our presentation, we have some guidance on that. It would only be the students who came in contact with the student that had, that tested positive for COVID. So in the elementaries, it's pretty limited. They would probably, it would probably be the class of nine who were in that. And so the class of nine, as long as the teacher would have to quarantine for 14 days. However, the other students, if they did not come in contact, would not have to. That is the guidance we have right now from the Department of Health. That is something we haven't thought about yet, but I will add it to our list.
Lee, thank you very much. Arathi Ravi is the next person. Arathi, good evening. Arathi, you should be promoted. You can just unmute. Arathi, can you hear me? All right, you can stay, say there, we'll go on to the next person, we'll come back to Arathi. The next person is Rebecca. I can, Rebecca.
Hey Rebecca, can you just give your name for, so that Donna can have it in the minutes?
Great. Go ahead Rebecca.
If you're in one of the hazardous routes, we will still bust your children.
Mary Beth?
We, yeah, we are asking that, that the little ones use either a, some kind of plastic disposable baggie or some kind of smaller bag that can be washed easily, you know, maybe a string bag or something. Because again, we're really concerned about space. You know, we don't want to, you know, these large backpacks all over the classroom or all over the hallways. Because again, we don't want, we don't want to be putting backpacks in, in closets or in lockers where all of a sudden kids now have to go into closets and they're very close to each other. So the fact that we're spreading all of these things out, the materials will either be at students' desks or they will be spread around the classrooms. And that's why we're really trying to limit the size of, of the backpacks, so to speak. So, you know, these big backpacks that kids come in with, or the big wheelies or whatever the newest thing is, we're trying to avoid that, if at all possible. No, it's, it's a very good point. And, and again, we're trying to balance what, what's safe for the technology and then where we're putting all of these items when they come into the school. You know, it's not an easy solution. It's not a perfect solution. I don't know if Mike is still there. Mike, do you have any thoughts on, on the technology travel?
Um, Mike, Mike had a, an internet issue, so I do not believe he's back on the, on the audio. I think it's, I think it's fair to say that it's a balance, right? I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not, the guidance is we want to be as small and as temporary with these backpacks as possible. So the old days of the larger backpacks and larger wheelies, we're directionally going to smaller items that can be easily stored at a desk and not in a closet for the reasons that we stated. So, uh, and, and this is just yet another item where we're going to, we're going to grow with this one. We're going to see what kids bring in, we're going to recommend, see how it goes in the classroom. And I'm sure our elementary school teachers will give guidance to those where we're going to try to make it as safe and secure and as, um, and as operationally feasible as possible.
So, um, there, if you go on our technology handbook, and I know Mr. Scara doesn't, isn't able to hear us. If you go on our technology handbook, it tells you like the level of pricing of what, to what happens if, if a child breaks a Chromebook or loses it, et cetera. So it's all laid out in our handbook. And I know their, the principals are working diligently to upgrade those right now and get them COVID ready. But I'm not sure they're exactly there yet.
Right, Rebecca, thank you very much.
And if I could just clarify, I just got a text from one of our elementary principals who said that we can use smaller backpacks and we're just not going to be using closets.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, uh, thank you Rebecca. The next person is Amy Raddick. Amy, good evening. I can, Amy, welcome.
At the very beginning, we've had discussions of offering one day as an A group and one day as a B group. We haven't finalized that yet. That way, you know, both groups would see their teachers right away and get through, you know, be able to go through a full rotation and do that. To your second point, and probably your more important point, is we're going to have to, as we plan the calendar, look at the entire year to make sure that it does get balanced for, balance that in person versus out of person. You know, especially when we hit the month of November and we have teachers convention and Thanksgiving. We have to make sure that that balances out. So that is, that is a priority. What we, what we are committed to doing is making sure that we provide our families with the A and B schedule and fix that in stone so that people can plan accordingly. And we may have to make some adjustments and flip the morning and afternoon day to kind of balance things out along the way, but that won't impact who's there, so to speak. So there's a, there's a couple moving parts and that's something that we haven't finalized yet. But it is something that is on our radar and we're very much aware of, that we have to make sure we balance that. Similar to.
All right, Amy, thank you very much. The next person is Sandy S. Sandy, good evening. I can hear you, welcome. Now, oh, now I, you have something in front of the camera, your camera's on, but you, oh, there you are. Now we got. Uh, the answer to that is, is no, but parents will have to certify that their student has less than 100.4 before they come to school that day. Uh, parents will have to go on to, I think you heard Mr. McKinney talk about earlier. We'll have a, a part of the, the Power School application will be, a parent will have to certify that their student has less than 100.4 each and every day.
It's an online app that you will go on and, and, and check in that you are, that you are, that you, that you've, that you've taken your kid's temperature.
Yes, the, we will be, um, we will be asking the students to have their video on. That'll be part of that guidelines and expectations for success in a remote learning environment. It's important that we, we have the video and are able to see our students. So that will be part of what we send out as our expectation. Correct.
Yes, there will be, there will be PE. We will, right now, we have a guideline as to what we're doing. It will be more of individual sports, individual activities without touching balls or touching each other or getting close to each other. And mostly outdoors whenever possible. That, you know, is going to be a task. I would imagine that PE teachers will do the same things with them. They will be expected to do the exact same things at home that the kids are doing online and in class. Yes, those are still part of the classes.
Sandy, thank you very much.
I don't think we got Sandy's last name.
Okay, thank you Sandy. Next up is Jared. Jared, good evening. Great, Jared, thank you very much. The next one is Rachel Krimkowitz. Rachel, good evening. I can, Rachel, welcome.
There will be three days per week of zero, oh, no, there will be, they will be remote on their days that they are not in, other than the Wednesday. Is that right? Yeah, they'll be remote. When they're not in person, they will be remote. Yes. Yes, for five days per week, yeah, every other. So I can, and I don't know if Mary Beth has more information than I do. Ms. Copaz has more information than I do, but I've had multiple conversations with Ms. Corley and it is difficult to live stream kindergarten children. If you have a five-year-old, you know, they, they are, they're, they're wiggly. So, um, as of what we have talked about is doing lessons where we do the teacher for a little bit and then the teacher watches what the students are doing at home, as well as while they're watching what's going on in the classroom. So that's what we're talking about. Mary Beth, do you have more information than I do?
Yeah, I mean, the reality is it's going to be very different in kindergarten because a lot of what happens is, again, first of all, there have to be a lot of transitions because of shorter attention spans. Lessons are much smaller and chunked. So, um, I mean, children can't sit and watch remotely in front of a screen for four hours. So obviously it's going to look very different in kindergarten and teachers are going to have to be creative in, in how they not only teach remotely, but the kinds of activities that they're sending home for children to do when they're not in class for, you know, during the, the face-to-face time. So it, it's going to be a challenge. There's no doubt about it. The way it was is a challenge in the spring will be the same challenges we have again in the fall. But it's the reality we're facing and we're doing the best that we can. Well, kindergarten is very center-based. So for example, there may be centers where they're doing math work, counting. There may be centers where they're doing word work or, or. There may be centers where they're doing word work or, or, um, working with letters. So again, um, those center-type activities will be sent home, obviously, in baggies or packets so that, um, when they are, when children are at home remote, um, obviously there needs to be some kind of guidance at home that's taking place, but the teachers also can be guiding remotely, obviously. So i- it's tricky, but as I said, it's center-based and it's a lot of play-based learning. So, um, you know, it should be fun and when teachers create these activities, hopefully they're creating almost game-like activities so that children can learn through play as well. Yes. Yes, so o- often when these center-type activities are sent home, they are sent home in little baggies. Um, so, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure teachers will be providing a lot of those resources for parents.
Rachel, thank you very much. Uh, the next person is Arathi Ravi. I know we, uh, we lost you, but we have you back, I saw your note in the chat, so welcome back. I can, welcome. No worries.
Um, well, to be honest, you would be very surprised at how much independent work students can do in kindergarten on their own after they've been given some guidance. So again, when I talk about center-based learning, F, a teacher would work with some, a small group of students to teach them how to either play a game or do this learning activity and then actually let them go off and spend some time, 10, 15 minutes, doing this learning ta- activity on their own. So, um, and then, then you build stamina. So a learning activity may start with only five or 10 minutes and then it can increase to maybe 15 minutes or, or maybe even 20 minutes. So, um, it looks very different in kindergarten in September than it would in January or it would in June when they're almost first graders. Um, and again, so it's building that independence and building stamina. But as I said, it's not going to be a go off and work by yourself for an hour. Um, that, that's not the way we build stamina. So again, um, just to reiterate, it's centered-based, there will be learning activities. Much of it will be teacher-directed, but some of it will be students trying to do some of the learning on their own with guidance from people who are, are watching, um, the children at home.
It was considered, it just, um, brought us to a few employee issues if we went in that direction, but it was considered.
All right, Arathi, thank you very much. Uh, next up is Victoria Reed, Victoria, good evening. Victoria, if you, if you can hear me, you can unmute. All right, Victoria, we'll come back to you. The next person I see is Dennis O'Brien, Dennis, are you there? Good evening, Dennis, how are you? Well.
So, um, if, for some of our teachers who work with our deaf and hard-of-hearing students, the ma- the masks that have the, the, um, clear window and that they fogs up when they talk. So the only thing we found that works is the, the face shield and it's a wraparound that, that blocks out any, I guess, respiration coming from it. So those types of face shields are the kind that are approved. Yeah, yes. Uh, Mr. McKinney, can you answer that question? I do know we have some microphones, um, but you would know more than I do about that.
I'd have to clarify with Mr. Scariff, he has done any of that research to provide additional for situations that it might apply. And it's a, it's an excellent point considering the need to wear masks. So it's, it's definitely something that we, we will have to explore. I don't have the answer for you directly, but I will speak with Mr. Scar on that point.
Great.
Thank you.
Dennis, thank you. Victoria Reed, I still see you there, uh, hopefully you're unmuted now. I can, good evening.
Uh, the afternoon sessions will be available and will have structure. The structure will be flexible for the teachers and the students so that we are working specifically to meet their needs. Um, it, again, uh, with, within that time period, this, you know, that gives us an opportunity to have direct, practice, you know, be it in math class or for an opportunity in science to see a demonstration and those other things. It's just, it's not as clearly defined, uh, for those afternoon hours because we want it to be flexible enough to meet the individual needs of the students and allow us to reteach, you know, to take those formative assessments that we're doing in the morning hours and then apply what we learned from those assessments and then be very specific with our instruction in the afternoon. That's, that's the goal, the, the question has always been the space and with lack of lockers, they will have them with them the entire day. Certainly, we want the safe transport of the devices. We're going to work specifically with the teachers. Um, and it'll be different for every student or for different classes so that we minimize the back and forth for things, items that don't have to go back and forth. For example, there might be some text materials that only remain in the class or there might be some text materials that go home and the students only use them when they're in the home setting because some of those, you know, some of our text materials have the technology component as well. So what we're going to try to do, obviously, we know the devices have to go back and forth, but with a four-period day in person, we want to minimize what goes back and forth. And if that allows students to carry a smaller bag, I think everybody, that, that will work. Absolutely, that's something that, you know, the guidance department will work and, you know, we're, we will not have the opportunity to have as many of the in-person meetings, but we will have to be able to still make sure we walk those students through the important junior year because there's going to be a lot of unknowns with, you know, with SATs and ACTs and we're going to have to be very good with communicating with those students, particularly our juniors and seniors who are on that last stretch of, uh, applying to school. So that is definitely something that our counselors are aware of and are preparing for as we speak.
Victoria, thank you very much, we appreciate, um, uh, that comment. Beth Goldstein, you're next and you're live and we see you.
I can link it to my next newsletter.
Well.
We can also post it on our website.
We'll, we'll also post it on our website, we'll have it on our social media page when we publicize it. You won't have a problem finding it.
Um, we, I, I'm not sure, Mr. McKinney, do you know the answer to that question?
I can work with the principals, um, to, you know, the issue with, not the issue, but we are trying to tailor that document to each of the age groups so that it's appropriate for best practices and those. It's going to be a short document, but it's going to be kind of a summary of what we learned that allowed, you know, students to be successful in that environment, um, and kind of set the expectation. I will work with the principals to get that document out as quickly as possible. You know, our, our first priority will be to divide it, you know, if we move forward to dividing up into an A's and B's, you know, and making sure that our students are on, in the right spot so that we can communicate that. But we will make that a priority as well. We are in the process, our, our, our first professional development opportunity that we just opened up is, um, specific to the conferencing tools. Um, and then from there, we will build the other opportunities, uh, for grade level collaboration and planning to allow for those teachers to share. For example, I can give you, uh, an example, in the, uh, elementary grades, we had a long discussion on how to use, uh, videos to present new topics so that students can watch them on multiple occasions. And then additionally, parents could support the learning and watch the same video input to help students in the evening if there was an additional assignment. So those types of, so teaching all teachers, giving them the skills necessary to be able to do those things. That's our, that's our secondary step with the professional development as we roll into this year now that we have a better, uh, grip on what's next. Thank you.
Great. No, I would say your last question, go ahead.
At this time, um, we haven't gotten any guidance on the evaluation process or procedures. I will say that usually we are given documents that tell us exactly what we are, what standards we are supposed, we are holding teachers to. I assume something is coming soon regarding remote versus in-person.
Great, Beth, thanks very much. Uh, the next person shows up to me, it just says W. So, um, hold on, W, can you just give me your name, please? Good evening, Kate, welcome. Good evening, Kate. Welcome.
So I, we will definitely offer opportunities for students to engage with one another so that they can, they can build those connections with their classmates, whether they're at home or whether they are in person. Was there another part to that question? Not at this time. And that again, it's a, it's a not at this time, since the announcement came just yesterday at noon. And we have been fully focused on first Plan A, then Plan B. We have not, we have not reverted to Plan C.
Kate, thanks. Thank you very much, Kate. Julie Lloyd, you're next. Julie, if you can just come up, you, you should be. I can now. Good evening, Julie. Welcome.
Correct. During the summer months, it is not required. It's optional. We're, we're trying to make as many opportunities available to fit different schedules at different times of the day and different days of the week. So teachers that can afford themselves of that opportunity are able to do that. Once we get back to school, we will have additional opportunities to provide further professional development and, and make use of some of the cohorts that we have and some of the established committees and grade level meetings to follow up with additional structured professional development that will hit all of our teaching staff members. All, all of our principals and supervisors and instructional leaders spent a significant part of their days bouncing around the different Zoom sessions and visiting lessons. You know, even though we weren't conducting formal observations, you know, by letter of the law, we were in those classrooms with our teachers and observing all the good things that were happening, and that will continue. It also gives the district leadership the opportunity to share the best practices that they're seeing other people and tap some of them for, to lead professional development. So there's, there's many purposes for that. And, and, you know, from an administrative standpoint, we don't, we schedule our meetings for times when students aren't in classes so that our administrative team can be in those sessions as much as possible. The district has been committed to integrating SEL. That was a project long before the COVID. And we will continue to integrate that. We, at this time, have not planned for those additional, for, for some of those days. I can tell you that we will be committed to supporting students and the social emotional learning and trying to integrate that across the board. And that, you know, we did adopt a social emotional framework at the end of last year for just this purpose, so that we can integrate it and make it a K-12 priority so that our students are getting that, some of that support in all of our classroom settings.
It is definitely something we will take a look at, but we are very committed to making sure we have social emotional learning integrated throughout our curriculum. But I can definitely see your concern, but it's something we will take a look at.
I'm sorry. Our, our students will follow their, their normal schedule during the day. So if they had something scheduled, they will still meet with all of their classes. EP attached to lunch, we will have to format that a little bit differently, obviously, because we're not running the lunch periods. So that is a, a scheduling issue that Mr. Geiger is addressing.
So, so you mentioned PE. Just so you know, PE is required by the, the state of New Jersey. So we do have to have PE during the day. Study. As of right now, we have not been given that guidance. So we, we, we can look into it, but as of right now, we are still given the guidance that PE is counted and it is a requirement for students to graduate. We can definitely discuss it. I don't know the specifics of it right at this moment, but we can definitely discuss it. I will get back to you.
Great. Thanks, Julie. Next up is Dipdika. Dipdika, good evening. I can hear you. Welcome.
So we have, the building principals of all the buildings have analyzed their classes. They've looked at the spaces between. And they, they have definitely gotten the classrooms mapped out and distance across the board. So it would be an equitable experience in every classroom in the elementary buildings. Yes, they will receive materials. You'll be getting letters from your principals in the, in the next week to discuss how you're going to pick up materials and how that's going to be distributed. So the schedules were pretty much planned, but now we need to take a look at our population that's going to go into Plan C and make some adjustments. So they'll be, as soon as we get all of that information, the final schedules will be released. I think it would vary amongst the classroom, like some, some of the lessons would be more teacher intensive and could last longer. And some would be kind of an anticipatory, anticipatory set. Send the students off to do some work and still remain, the teacher would still remain online so that the students could contact her or him if they needed help and then have a closure activity. So I don't know if we can give an exact minimum time for that.
Right. Dipdika, thank you very much. Jared Weisfeld, you're up next. I can, Jared. Welcome.
We would require them to, you would to mark him absent. Yeah, because it would be bouncing back and forth from virtual to in-person. And we need to know if you're in-person or if you're remote.
Can I, can I, can I follow up on that question, Melissa? So, so if, if an, if an in-school student on a day that they're expected to be in school is, is home, they are absent, but they are still welcome to, to join the remote session or they're not?
They can, absolutely. They can join the remote session, but they would be counted as absent for that.
Right. So they're, so they're, so they're recorded as absent because they were expected to be in school and they were not. But they can make up the work just the same way as when someone's absent and they get work sent home, they can make up the work. They can make up the work by participating in the remote session, but they're absent. Okay, Jared, does that, does that answer your question a little better?
Because, I don't know if you, you can call it chosen, chosen over the parents, but the teachers are the ones who are the most at risk. We know that adults have, adults generally experience COVID more difficult, in a difficult manner than children do. And so in looking out for their physical health was the option that I chose.
And Jared, let me just add to that. The question that was asked in the first survey was, would you send your child to school under Plan A? There are many people who answered yes to that, but preferred Plan B. And many of them reached out to me directly. So it is not, you cannot assume that the 68% of people who answer that question preferred Plan A. So I just want to clarify the question that was asked and, and, and what, what you can read into the response.
I would say at this moment, it's not in stone yet. We are discussing letting the teachers go home so that we can keep our teachers. A lot of them would have to take leaves if we did not give them that opportunity to go home with their own children.
I do not weigh in any more than the superintendent just shared. It is something that, it has been asked a number of times. It is something that we are working through. And Dr. Varley and her team is looking through the best way. There are many factors to consider in that question. It's, it's an easy question to ask. It's a very difficult one to answer. And Dr. Varley and her team are looking into this and trying to figure out an equitable answer for everybody. Great, Jared. Thank you very much. Marissa Shurik. Marissa, welcome.
They would, they would, I guess I wouldn't call it observing. They'll be interacting in the class through a camera. in the class through a camera, through a virtual portal of some sort, which, if it could be Google Classroom, it could be Zoom, but the teacher would be interacting with them remote. That is something oddly enough, I'm having a conversation with the BHA about, about getting to having a meet and greet with the children before school starts. Well, you know, as soon as we can, but isn't, we are having a, we are having a conversation about it right now.
Marissa, Marissa, thank you very much. Krista S., you're up next. Krista, can you hear me? Krista S.? I can. Krista, welcome. Good evening.
We have not considered that at this time. It's honestly the first time we've, we've heard of it. It hasn't come, it hasn't come to our, we haven't thought about that.
Great, Krista. Thanks for that suggestion.
That's also something we haven't, we haven't considered. So it's something we'll have to go back and talk about.
So thank you very much. Kat, you're next up?
It's, it's two days in and two days remote. Yes.
Exactly. Yeah, there's, there's a very strict checklist, which you could actually find on the NJ DOE site for all preschools that, you know, there, there's an awareness that children have toys, they put toys in their mouths, those kinds of things. How are we going to keep little ones with masks on? So they, they have given us very strict guidelines on how to go about doing, again, the best that we can to try to keep little ones safe and more importantly, I shouldn't say more importantly, equally importantly, is to keep the adults safe as well. So we can certainly get you that checklist. We'll find a way to, to give you access to that for what we need to do in the preschools to keep, to keep the classes safe. And again, the, the different efforts that we need to take to, you know, if they're at tables, how we're having Plexiglas sections for the centers, how we're cleaning materials in a very similar fashion that you would do even before COVID, because again, we, you know, we know that the amount of germs when little ones are putting things in their mouths and so on and so forth, all the manipulatives and all the toys that we're playing with, we're really following very much the same protocols that we would pre-COVID, but just taking it honestly to, to the next level and to the nth degree. But we'll make sure we'll get you that access to, access to the, the guidance that we've been given by the state. It's a very good and very extensive checklist.
I'll turn that over to Mr. McKinney since he was the chair of that committee.
So when we looked at it and we had the discussions with the different groups, you know, we erred on the side of predictability for families and stability to have the, you know, there are districts that are, there's a, you know, all the different models are out there. And we felt that having the same days for a full week gave parents the greatest flexibility and ability to plan accordingly for, for their family situation. This probably doesn't work for everybody, but we felt that that was the best option for our community and our families.
All right, Kat, thank you very much. Next up is Nicole Moriello. Nicole, good evening. Thank you for your comments, Nicole. As we stated before, I mean, we are, we are doing everything we can to balance both the best educational outcomes that we want for all of our children and balancing that with the safety of our students and our staff. We believe that Plan B does that. We're taking every, every, every possible way that we can do that. There's anxiety in the community. There's complexity in what we're doing. We're not shying away from that. But one of the things that Dr. Varley said is, we have an incredible teaching staff, you know, and our teaching staff are really, from the feedback that we have received from many, really did a tremendous job in this past spring semester in doing remote learning. Yes, you know, there are, there are people, and as I said also in the beginning, there is no fully right or fully wrong answer. I understand how you feel and others feel that, you know, maybe Plan C would, would work better. And I, we respect that opinion of others. We're, the superintendent's recommending Plan B based on balancing those educational outcomes with the safety of the students and staff. So thank you. I appreciate your comment. You'll, you'll hear my comments when, you'll hear all the board's comments when the board votes afterwards. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Dan McGovern, you're up next. Good evening, Dan. Dan, thank you very much. Next up is Todd Najarian. Todd, good evening. Welcome. I'm trying to understand your question. I think the second part of that is, if a large number of people have the parent option, choose to have their, their children be remote, it will be, it'll be, then there'll be a smaller number of students who will be in school. So, and we will continue, at least what the recommendation is, we'll continue with Plan B and there'll just be a larger percentage of people who will be remote. Our Plan B was built on, well, our Plan B was built on nobody being remote. So our Plan B is built on nobody being remote. Now, obviously, we're not naive to the fact that 32% of people in the survey indicated a couple of weeks ago that they would be remote, but our, our Plan B is built to be for the entire school district, all 2,600. Yeah, yeah, the answer is yes, you are. So the forum only has you fill it out if you want to choose Remote C as an option. But I think the essence of your question is, is a, is a, is a Plan C student have the same experience as the Plan B during their remote week? And the answer to that is yes. So a Plan B who's on remote week will be having that same experience with that same teacher as the student who's in Plan C. Right. And I think the essence of that slide, that's Plan C that has the asterisk, is should a condition change? Should the governor make a change? Should conditions in our town or county change? You know, and then we went, and then it was a school-directed Plan C. You know, and then we went, and then it was a school-directed Plan C. That was the essence of that slide. Whereas right now, it's a parent-directed Plan C, which is an option. Yep. That's above my pay grade, Melissa. I'll give that one back to you.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question, the question was, why did we choose the marking period as the time that you could make the change from one option to another?
Because we wouldn't want a student to come in. We, we need time, right? Like, we need to have time to space out the classroom more to, like, if we had five kids come back in one class, they'll, and they rolled over the very next day. We wouldn't have the materials. We wouldn't have the spacing. We wouldn't be able to fit them into the classroom. So doing it a marking period, it gives us an endpoint where we know, and a beginning point where we realize we're going to have a certain amount of children coming back and we can plan for that.
All right, Todd, one more. Well, I'll just tell you this, Todd. I mean, we, we have put, obviously, as you know, a lot of thought into this. We have a lot of questions that we have answered. There are some that came up tonight. I have a running list of questions that we still need to answer. Anytime we begin to look at the calendar to, you know, to change this by a couple of weeks, as you know, we have 180 days to meet. The calendar is a very difficult thing to do with. The board looks at that in multiple angles, you know, almost a year in advance. And for right now, we believe that starting school on September 3rd, which is what our plan is, is still the best option. Do we have all the answers? No. Will we have all the answers on the first day of school? No, we're going to be continuously learning on this. We'll provide the answers as best as we can. We have an FAQ document. We'll continue to provide updates. Dr. Varley's letters go out often enough. And we believe that we have enough of the answers. We need to get kids back in school and we'll continue to provide answers as best we can. So that's a one take. So that is one of the follow-up areas. That's one of the three that's on my list. And we will get back to you shortly, the community, not you personally, but the community. I understand that this is a big decision for parents to make. And to the extent that we can give you additional guidelines and expectations, we will do our best to give that to you in advance of the August 20th date to make your decision. Welcome. Thank you very much. Susan Poe, good evening, Susan. It's okay. It's okay. Let's, let's take one at a time. One at a time. Let's deal with the first one, the lockdown and the drill component.
So all the principals over the summer have been doing webinars on what the lockdown fire drill guidance is. As of right now, my understanding, the DOE is postponing doing drills in the beginning for right now. I don't know how long that's going to last, but as of right now, that is the guidance we are given.
The second one was on what's our, what's our procedure for confirming that every child who's in school has, the parent has done the, the temperature check via the app?
So you're faced with a big issue here. Like, if we allow students to come to school and we stand outside and they're all in large groups while we're trying to check their temperature, we have one issue. So if, and then if we have them stand all outside in large groups while we check to make sure that their parents have checked their temperature, we have another issue. So our understanding and the way this would happen is the parent checks the temperature. They submit it via Power School. You, as a homeroom teacher, check your list when you get, sit down, you check your list. And then you send the children to the nurse who have not had their temperature checked. They will get their temperature checked and then the building secretary will call the parents and tell them they need to check to, remind them of the temperature checking protocol. So so what, what if they were standing outside with everyone and they were there's no good answer.
The short answer is, we will deal with that if that situation was, just like if they get infected in any other way, we will have to deal with that. I, I do understand that. Your third question was around materials. And are there enough materials for both the in-person activity and the remote activity? Mary Beth, is that something you can address?
To be honest, I don't have an answer for that, Doug.
Okay.
I can follow up though.
That's, that's okay.
I can, I can interject there. I do believe that, once again, the partnership with the PTO is helping us. And we are developing ways to provide students with some manipulatives that they possess just for them and be able to take home and use. And they wouldn't be shared among groups of students. And I don't know the full details, but I do believe that's already taken place and we're in preparations to distribute those once we return.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And I think, Susan, your SEL one was more of a comment than, than, than a question. Great, Susan, thank you very much. Leo Covielo. Ah, Amy. That's okay. Amy, good evening. Welcome. Let me just answer that question for you quickly. So I did, I got a text from Mike Scara. We do have some external microphones that we will have in the district. He's also looking at, to what you just said, Amy, ways to amplify that via alternate solutions. So that's on our list of follow-up. You have some, not all, but he's looking at that. Great. Great. Thank you. That's correct. Yes.
No, that's, that's absolutely a scenario that we would endorse is if the teachers wanted to do that. Or, for example, in the day before, if they created kind of a longer-term assignment, it would be time to check in and see how, you know, what kind of progress the students are making. So the teachers just have control of that ability to assign that as well.
So only the people who must quarantine would be notified? Absolutely.
Correct. Amy, Amy, thanks very much. Emma Kingsley. Megan, good evening.
So I can answer that, the, the first question about going back to school full-time. I think we would definitely coordinate with our Department of Health and work with, also, we do. I think all of us are glued to the governor at 1 o'clock every day of the week when he speaks. And as we see other, I meet with Union County superintendents. I meet with Morris County superintendents. I meet with superintendents who are not even local. And we all discuss what's the next step and when we can get all children back all day long, the way we used to. So I'm planning to stay just as informed as I am now and continue those conversations.
The second one addressed the, the four hours of direct instruction of new instructor, Scott called it new instruction each day versus the seven hours that a child is in school, in school. How are we going to bridge that gap? Scott?
Hi, Megan. It's been a while. It's been a while. Really, what I, the way I would answer that is the, the contact time that students are going to have with their teachers is really the same. The format is what's changing. And, you know, while the new instruction is taking place in those morning hours, those, those afternoon hours need to be productive. And we need to monitor and make sure that we are moving forward to meet the curriculum. We can't just, it can't be, it can't be a free-for-all. We need to have structure to it. We need to have a plan for it and we need to move students forward. What that will look like will be a little bit different than the hour-long class periods. But to your point, if we're going to be successful and accomplish the district curriculum, we are going to have to be productive. Will it be the same as being in a six-period day at GL with everybody in person? No, the, the format will definitely be different. But that is our, you know, that is our goal. That is why we're making that time specific. So it's not just, here's two hours in the afternoon, you know, try to match up with your teachers. We have scheduled it so you have a specific time with a specific teacher so that we can, we know where everybody's supposed to be and what they're supposed to be doing. Now, there's going to be flexibility within that to, to meet the individual needs of students. But, you know, our goal is to improve that from what we did in the spring. Help me with your, the next question. So that's an ongoing, as Dr. Varley mentioned earlier, that's an ongoing discussion as, as to what's going to happen. The good news is, is that teachers are able to go into the classrooms where, as opposed to last spring, when they weren't, you know, only the essential workers could actually report to district. So the good news is, we will have full access to both, you know, our materials and our technological resources. The decision, just as the decision for the afternoon, hasn't been determined yet. The decision for fully remote and how that would look for our teaching staff is yet to be determined. I know there's ongoing discussions there.
Great, thank you.
I, I'd just like to, like to add that, 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 and a, a discussion point in every board meeting will be whether we we should move, you know, once again, you know, assuming we're on Plan B, you know, whether we should move to Plan A, how quickly we can get back in, into, into the classroom on a more regular basis. So, so, you know, Dr. Varley said that it'll be constantly monitored, but it will also be a discussion point at every board meeting.
Great, Megan, thank you. Thank you for our re- Thanks very much, appreciate your comment. Jean Kingsley, good evening.
So as of right now, extracurricular activities are still on. Depending on the activity, it could be remote. And I, I don't know the answer exactly how we're handling all of that just yet. We do know that sports, as of right now, the NJ SIAA, they are moving forward with sports at this moment at 10:47 PM on August 13th, they are moving forward.
Great, Jean, thank you very much.
Melissa, I just want, for people who are listening with regards to sport, just clarify the fact that my understanding is regardless of what option you choose, whether it be B or C, your child is still able to participate in extracurricular activities.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
I bet you're up next.
The expectations in the afternoon is that teachers will provide a schedule for working with students and they will communicate that with the, with the students and the families. So it might be a one-on-one check-in, meaning conferring or conferencing with students in the afternoon. It might be working with a small group of students with similar needs. It might be providing time where students who have questions can check in with teachers, but there will be set schedules set forth by the teachers and communicated with the students and the families. Well, when I say conferring, conferencing, or small group instruction, that can be teaching. It can be new teaching, it can be reteaching, it can be enrichment based on the needs of the students. So we have to first determine who's in our class and who's sitting in front of us and what their needs are. And then as we teach lessons, in order to differentiate, and elementary teachers are masters in differentiation, meaning in my classroom, let's take for example, a 3rd grade classroom. I may have the student who's still just emerging as a reader, and then I may have a student who can read Harry Potter. So I have to be a master in how to teach reading to students who are on the spectrum in such diverse ways. Same is true for writing. As a writing teacher, writing is on a continuum. So you may have students who are still working on constructing basic sentences and you may have students who are writing novels. Again, elementary teachers are masters in differentiation. So I not only have to differentiate during the day when I'm working with students, not only face to face, but remotely, but then this gives me an opportunity in the afternoon to target my instruction in smaller ways. So it may look different than the way it was in, in the, in the spring. I think we're making a more structured schedule for the fall. It will, I think it will look different than what it looked like in the spring. Well, that's an option as well. I mean, that's part of teaching where students can sometimes, it's called a flipped classroom, where teachers might ask students to watch a video and then the next day when we come in together, we may discuss it. Or we may ask students to go do work independently. That is part of good instruction. I talked about it a little earlier, something called gradual release of responsibility, where teachers teach a lesson explicitly and then we might do a few activities together, you know, in a supported way. And then I ask students to go off and try it independently. It's a way to, we call it a formative assessment to determine if students can do the work independently.
Got it. All right. No, there's no repercussions. You can switch from in-person to remote. There's no repercussions. Thank you.
It's Jerry, I have a question. Really to Melissa. Melissa, are you thinking of doing like a frequently asked question section on remote learning? I'm looking at the chats and a lot of people seem to still be confused. And so there's a lot of people that are not on this Zoom meeting. So maybe that's something you're considering or would consider, just that we could get it out there and we could get it, said everybody that's concerned about remote instruction will have the answer, they can make that decision. So I don't know what you plan to do with that.
Yeah, we do have a frequently asked questions document. It's not completely on remote learning, but it does have some answers to the questions that are being asked on it. We can definitely provide a separate remote learning question and answer for them.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, so there's two people who are, who have already asked a question. I'm going to allow you to ask.
Doug, excuse me, can I just ask one clarification, Mary Beth? When you were talking about what's going to happen in the afternoon, you did say it could be new teaching, but I thought I heard pretty clearly earlier that there would be no new content taught in the afternoon session. So could you just clarify that?
I did hear Dr. McKinney say that. I think there'll be very little new teaching taking place, but if I'm working with a small group, again, when I talk about differentiating for what students need, if I'm meeting with a small group and there's this, for example, they got what they, you know, what they needed in the morning, I may go off and enrich them in another way. So I'm not necessarily designing lessons in the afternoon the way I would in the morning, but I can't say that I wouldn't necessarily on the, in the moment, you know, when you're teaching to students, you may teach something new in the afternoon. It may not be an intentional objective, but it may happen.
Okay, so there are two people who spoke already, Lee and Liz. I'm going to let you come in unless, let you ask one question. Please make it brief because I know we want to move over. I know people want to hear what the board has to say in their comments. So Lee, I'll start with you. One question. Okay. Great, Lee, thank you very much. Liz?
Yeah, we, we do have that planned.
Great, okay. Seeing nobody else who wants to address the board, I will close the citizens' hearing for that. So 10, for the, for the 40 or 50 people that spoke, thank you for those thoughts. I now want to open it up one by one to the board for any comments or questions that the board has for the administration, either based on what you've seen in the plan or anything that you've heard. I'll start the way they show up on my panel. So Dante, I'll start with you. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would comment a little bit. I'm a parent before, I'm a board member. I have three children that'll be Governor Livingston this year. And, you know, obviously these are difficult times. I think the guidance from, from government officials is confusing, contradictory at times. I think people want absolutes and I'm not sure absolutes exist. You know, even once we have a vaccine, it's not a guarantee of safety. It's likely going to be limited in its effectiveness and a lot of people that are health conscious likely won't take it. So while there's concerns out there, we're going to have to live at a level of risk. I'm supportive of Plan B. I was also supportive of Plan A. I think people that are really nervous should, should choose Plan C to see how it goes. My gut is in the next three to four months, it's going to get significantly better or significantly worse. And at that point, you'll have a clearer vision, but if you're nervous, stay home. If not, I think, you know, getting to school and dealing with that interaction and the mental aspect is healthy and that's why I'm supporting Plan B this evening.
Great, Dante, thank you very much. Chris?
Well, I think Dante said it pretty well. And the only thing I would add is, you know, we're trying to balance the needs of a lot of different constituents. And I think, I think Plan B is a reasonable compromise. I would like to just say something that I read in the chat room, which was, like someone, and I don't, I hope I don't sound defensive, but somebody was saying, hey, the board's not asking a lot of questions. It's not making you feel comfortable. I can assure you, this board is very engaged on all of these issues and has been through this, okay, with every possible permutation. So that's all I want to say. And like Dante said, I think, you know, it's about, it's, it's a matter of finding the right balance. I don't think we can eliminate all risk. I do think that the concerns of the teachers need to be taken into account as well as the educational and social needs of our children. And Plan B seems to me a reasonable and fair compromise at this point in time.
Got it, thank you. Phil?
Okay, am I on, yeah. So I guess, I guess the question I want to hear from, from Dr. Varley and Mr. McKinney is how significant of a decrease in the education, the decrease in the quality of the education, do you think Plan A, Plan B is from Plan A and, and a full remote learning would be from Plan B?
So I think we can, we can all agree, Plan A is definitely more of, has a higher educational quality. It does however bring more risk. So I couldn't give you an exact figure on what the difference was. As far as Plan C is concerned, the governor has given in his executive order that Plan C must match our in-person education in terms of quality. So that's just a portion of his executive order that we must follow.
Okay, so that, that's impossible, isn't it?
It is impossible.
Okay, so, 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 and, and Mr. McKinney, do you, do you hold a different view on this?
No, I agree. I mean, it, you know, the difference between A and B is 50% contact time with our teachers. And, you know, I certainly value that contact time and believe it's important for a lot of different reasons, you know, both in the delivery of content, delivery of instruction, but also in that connection that teachers make with students that help them become good learners and good citizens. So there's definitely, I don't know necessarily how to measure that, but certainly the more we can get our students with their teachers, with balancing safety, that's, you know, that's the difficult challenge that we're faced with. But I don't think you could argue that the more time they are with our teachers in person, the better off everybody will be.
Okay, so, so my view is that, that our job is to provide the best education we possibly can within a reasonable level of risk. And now that's, it's made more complicated by the practical concerns with respect to the teacher's willingness to teach. But, but, you know, I believed at the time that I, that Plan A provided a reasonable protection and a reasonable amount of mitigation of risk and that it was a better, better form of education than what Plan B was. I still believe that. I think Plan B is better than, than Plan C. I think Plan B also provides a reasonable level of protection to, to everyone. And, and, you know, so, so, you know, I, am I supportive of Plan B? Yes, I'm supportive of Plan B, but I'm also supportive of Plan A. And, and, and I think that we should move as quickly as we can and at every opportunity that we can, we should be, we should be looking to move towards Plan A and move to, and move towards Plan A in pieces if we, if we have to and if we can. So if we, you know, if, if, if two weeks into this, we look and we say, you know what? We could bring the, the younger kids who are just getting an even less effective remote education, we can bring them back into the classroom. less effective remote education, we can bring them back into the classroom on, you know, on a more regular basis. We should consider doing that. If we, and, and, and if we say, you know, look, we can bring the high school kids back, we should consider doing that. We should, you know, at every opportunity, we should look to get the most kids with the most touches, you know, and, and I recognize that Plan A is not going to be anywhere near the education that we were providing a year ago at this time. You know, the, the, the education that we were able to provide when we had our kids in school all the time with a lunch break is significantly better than, than what we're, what we're going to be able to provide in Plan A. But Plan A is better than Plan B, and Plan B is better than Plan C. And our job is to educate the kids, and we are going to spend a huge amount of time remediating the damage that has been done over the, you know, over last year and over the beginning of this year. And, and we should be very aware of it. So, so yes, am I supportive of Plan B? I am supportive of Plan B with the caveat that we are moving towards Plan A as quickly as we can. And, and, and that we recognize that that's the ultimate goal, not the ultimate goal. That is the interim goal. The ultimate goal is to get the kids back in school full time.
Great, thanks, Bill. Angela?
So I would just like to say that this has been a very difficult decision, not just as a parent with two students that have very different needs, but as a board member who needs to consider the best interests of all students, parents, teachers, and the community at large. Since the last board meeting, there was new data brought to light that we didn't have or hadn't considered previously. In particular, strong feedback from parents and our faculty, which I felt needed to be taken into consideration. Since there are stakeholders in this and given the need for some compromise, because we do want our students to go back to school, their social, emotional, educational will be in. However, I do understand that there is a risk involved. I feel that Plan B is that compromise. It mitigates the risk to some degree, because only half the students will be in the classroom at a time. And it will definitely be more manageable and a safer option for all. It also allows students to get time back in the classroom so they don't feel so isolated at home. If we're looking for a perfect solution, we'll be here all year. And these are, this is, none of these are a perfect solution. One size does not fit all. And I believe Plan B addresses the concerns about having so many students in the classroom together. It reduces the risk significantly. And it helps us better social distance requirements. And also, it keeps our faculty safer. So I felt that Plan A was a, was a good plan, but I feel that this, after much consideration, that this is a better option. I think it's a good compromise, and I think it's a safer option. So I'm gonna go for Plan B.
Great, thank you, Angela. Jerry?
Yes, good evening. I agree with my colleagues. I think that Plan B is a good compromise. I think it's going to be challenging because we're going to have to continually make an assessment whether we are doing the proper procedures to keep our students and our staff safe. From what I'm hearing from Melissa and Donna and Scott, there is what appears to me to be a plan to be able to do that. I believe we're gonna have to be very fluid during this whole process. And if we find that there are some compromises there that we would have to move to another plan, maybe a Plan C, but with Bill, I would like to see us get to a Plan A at some point. So I do think that based on the assurances that our administrators feel that we can provide a safe environment, this does allow the students to have to contact with their teachers. I would support Plan B. However, I would say that we need to continue to have a lot of discussions and looking at this plan as we execute it. And as we know, things can change in a minute. I know that the checklist the governor gave out, according to Melissa, we've met the the parameters to not go to Plan C, which obviously we would not be allowed to go to Plan C anyway if indeed we were able to meet those parameters. So I do support Plan B. But I'm just saying that I think we need to continue to have discussions and looking at this to see if at any time we feel or, or any of the stakeholders feel that actually safety is an issue, then we have to reexamine it.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Mike?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Great questions asked by a lot of residents, so answered a lot of the questions I had already, but I do have one question and a statement. If, if Plan B is adopted, and I think this may have been asked by a resident, but did we consider if 50% of said class opts for full remote? Can we look at if that already class is at 50%, can they then go full time since it's already gonna be at 50%? Understanding there may be some logistics with the six through 12 grade, but the K through five who are not changing classes. Again, if there is 50%, since we're only gonna be allowing those that go from remote back in again three times during the year. So something I would definitely think we should look at. With that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Melissa.
I was, if, definitely if we noticed that across the board, our classes are very, very small, we would definitely reexamine what we're doing to bring more children in to be safe.
Thank you. So with that being said, so, yes, at the last board meeting, we unanimously voted for Plan A. My vote still stands for Plan A. To my knowledge, we have not received guide, revised guidance from the governor regarding the reopening of schools, which could give us sound reason to alter our plan for students coming September. I am not against being cautious, but I think we also need to balance what is in the best educational and emotional interest of our students. I don't feel Plan B will offer our children a sound educational plan. Plan B breaks the continuity of learning. The lack of consistency in student education will not be beneficial. I am concerned that weekly remote learning will not adequately reach all students due to family situations, childcare options, and technology limitations. Situation as both parents working, single parents homes, or families with multiple children if becomes difficult to oversee a child's academic for an entire week. With Plan B, we're asking our students to continuously adapt to a different style of learning each week. I don't feel this is ideal for any of our students, but especially our younger learners who thrive on routine and consistency. For these reasons, I cannot support going to Plan B and will not be voting for it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Helen?
Helen, you're on mute.
There you go.
I have problems with my speakers. Can you hear me now?
Unfortunately, we can, we can hear you. You're off mute, but it's, it's very garbled and we cannot hear you.
Can I go on through my phone?
You can try to join the Zoom call through your phone. If you drop, you drop from this video, I can add you back in when I see you back on as a new attendee.
While we're waiting, I got a question for Dante. Did, what has Mountainside decided to do?
We're on Plan A.
You're on Plan A for, for, for K through six?
K through eight.
K through eight.
Yeah, we do have the ability within our buildings to distance at six feet. So it was a pretty easy decision.
Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna give Helen a second and see if she rejoins. While waiting for Helen to join, I'm gonna just keep an eye to see if she does rejoin. I don't know that I have a lot more to share than what my colleagues have shared before. I want to first start by thanking Dr. Varley and your entire team. Obviously, Mr. McKinney and Mary Beth were here this evening. There is an entire team behind them who have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to decipher all of the state guidelines and really work amongst those committees to come up with what is the best interest for our students. So I applaud, Dr. Varley, you have our unending thank you for what you've done with your team over, over the summer. Starting with what you did in recommending Plan A and changing to Plan B. I have nothing but support for, for your recommendation. I do believe that, that Plan B is a, is a good solution for our entire ecosystem. I do believe it gives us educational outcomes that I am comfortable with as well as it does balance the safety and security concerns and does have an acceptable level of risk. I concur with that. It was, was Bill who started the conversation saying that moving to Plan A and getting us to a higher level of educational outcomes and ultimately back into school where we were pre-March 12th gets us back to where we wanted to be and get those educational outcomes. I don't know, I don't know a person in the educational community who doesn't want us to get back to that as quickly and as safely as possible. So I will be supporting the recommendation. Helen, you are back on. Can you hear me, Helen? Now we can hear you fine. Go ahead.
I would definitely agree. You are a very engaged board. So that was a, that was a missed comment, I assure you.
Okay, so we've heard from all the board members. One last, Melissa, do you have anything else you want to add before we close this?
Close the superintendent's report.
So, so before, before we vote, let me just kind of recap a couple of things. So I wrote down a number of follow-up items that we will make sure we get back to. One is around microphone usage for external microphones. I think there was a clear desire to us to publish those guidelines and expectations as soon as possible prior to August 20th. There were a couple of suggestions. One was around the study hall and EP period, whether that should stay or could be modified for more core topics. And there were a couple of other suggestions around, one around remote, remote things in advance of Thanksgiving and Christmas and confirming about the materials. I am sure there are other suggestions out there. The suggestion window doesn't close tonight. I will fully expect that, that my email and others will have other suggestions that'll come tomorrow. So with that, we will close out the superintendent's report, and I'll ask Jerry to move item 13A. Just so we're clear, so the public is clear. We are, what we are voting on right now is we are voting to accept the superintendent's recommendation for Plan B. So that's what we're voting on. Donna, roll call.
No, Jerry has to move it.
I have to move it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
13A.
All right.
And I'll second it, Jerry.
My bad. Motion and a second. We've already had the discussion. Donna, roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
No.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Hey, Bill, you're, Bill, you're on mute.
Yeah, with the caveat that we should readdress it at every meeting to see whether we can move to a more inclusive education. I'll vote yes to move forward B at the moment.
Okay.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is item 14, which is a revision to the superintendent's contract. Let me provide just a little context here. When Dr. Varley was hired last year, she had a three-year contract, and this is the beginning of her second year. We have made a very minor modification to that. We did not change the total compensation of her, of her contract, but we slightly modified the payment of her goals versus her salary. So she is going to have a slightly modified contract for year two and year three of her contract. And by law, we now need to open this up to a, an additional public hearing. So if anybody has a question or a comment about the superintendent's contract, we're going to have just for this one will open up. You'll do the same thing. Raise your hand if you have a question. And if you do, we will answer that question. I don't see anybody with a question. I'll wait another couple of seconds for that. Not seeing any other questions. Dante, can you move, can you move item 14?
Yes, I move item 14A.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Bill, you're on mute.
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Item 15, policies, curriculums, and textbooks?
I'll move, I'll move item 15.
Motion, motion and a second, any discussion? Roll, roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
He said yes.
Yes, I said, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Item 16, administration.
Yes, I'll move items A through D.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Item 17, education.
Yes, I move items A through D, 17.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Personnel, item 18, personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussions? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes, 19, business.
I'll move items A through K.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I'll make a note that on item I, there is a, a very large donation from the Mary Kay McMillan PTO of slightly over $30,000. And I will acknowledge, again, I do, I've done it on many other occasions, that the PTO is a, is one of our great partnerships over the many, many years that we've had. And this donation, I think you even heard it this evening, I think Scott mentioned it, that the PTO is stepping up to provide funding for some of the things that the district doesn't have the luxury of buying. So a $30,000 donation of, of gifts will go a long way on top of all the, the effort that they do. So thank you, Mary Kay McMillan PTO especially. Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Item 20, finance.
I reviewed the bills. They, they appear to be in order, so I will move items, what number are we? 20A through D?
Seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch? Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. At the risk of asking this question, is there any other business to come before the board at 11:26 on a Thursday night? I, I'll answer that.
Actually, Doug, I have a question. Do you, do you get a, do you get a printout of the chat?
I, I don't. I asked Mike Scara to, to extract the chat for us. I've been, I've been trying to keep track of a lot of the chat questions.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. I just haven't been able to keep up with it.
Yeah.
So if somebody gets it to me.
Yeah, so Mike Scara, I see you're still on. I, I know you had some computer problems, but if it's, if possible, before you close this meeting, Mike, to extract that chat window, that would be, that would be helpful. So let me make two, two final comments. Number one-
And it's not just because some people said nice things about me on it, by the way.
Yes, yeah. I, I-
You're all dead.
So did I.
Yeah. So let me make two final comments. First of all, number one is, our next meeting is on September 10th. That's our next meeting, when we will be back. And as I think has been mentioned a couple of times, you have this board's commitment that not only are we going to be discussing our reopening plan and where we are with Plan B at every board meeting, there will be discussions amongst the administrative team on a regular basis at where we are. We'll report out it, we will report it out at our board meetings, because that's when we formally report out to the public. But I can assure you that there will be many, many interim discussions about how we're doing adjustments that we're making, how we're navigating through this, and then, of course, we'll talk about it with, with the public. And, and second, I know most people are enjoying the last couple of weeks of their summer. School starts exactly three weeks from, from today, so I encourage everybody to enjoy their last couple of weeks of summer. I know that Dr. Varley will continue to communicate via her letter. She's done a number of times so far over the summer. We, we have a list of some of the questions that we want answered. I'll remind everybody that attached to Dr. Varley's last letter was the Google Form. So one week from today, August 20th, is the time that if you do want to select Option C as, as a parent option, it is due by August 20th. And I'll, I'll close, I'll close with, again, a thank you to everybody involved. Thank you to the community for sticking in. There's 128 people who stuck with us till 11:30 at night, and the 371 people, I believe, at there. So we have a community that cares. We have a community that wants to do what's right for our students, for our students, for our staff. And I, I just walk away being very, being very engaged with how the board is engaged, how the community is engaged, with that students being engaged.